Recording in progress.
So it's six o'clock, so we're gonna get started.
Do you want me to kind of read up the agenda?
Please, I kind of got a little bit memorized. First thing, is coming to the input?
Um, well, actually, this is a different meeting, it's not like a little... So we start right with the public hearing.
Alright, public hearing.
On Main Street ordinance.
Is there any, any input on the Main Street ordinance before we make our vote?
Yep, so open it up to public input for the Main Street ordinance. So call me during six o'clock.
Okay, I'll do it.
Aight.
My name is David Hill, 619 Main Street. I think, I don't know if I have to reiterate things that...
Probably not.
You don't, well, you can.
So, I won't bother unless there's a, you know, a voice in favor of keeping this, so.
Alright, so I'm just gonna give a teeny feedback from my own opinion. First of all, if we put the residents on Main Street through a lot of hetic, I apologize for that myself, for voting for it on the last time around. And the one thing I said a couple minutes ago is one thing I appreciate from the community is the community spirit. You guys all work together on parking issues and no... There's a gentleman here who mentioned about having no problem parking over the sewer cover, and you guys all work together. So it's always a nice feeling to have that there's no issue between your neighbors.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna say that before we open up the vote. Do you have any, any comment or anything for it?
Um, no, I think my only comment, as I had mentioned, was, you know, I feel that it appears to me, having, you know, been to the safety committee meeting and hearing everybody, it wasn't... It didn't originate as a safety issue, so I feel like it's probably a battle that the town should have left alone. So I apologize for the inconvenience, Dave.
Thank you. Alright, so you wanna make a motion?
Um, any other public, any other public input?
Oh, I'm sorry, I...
I just wanted to ask a quick question. Allison Cully, 21st South Street. I heard you mentioned the sewer manhole, sorry, stepped out for a second.
Yep.
Was there any decision about not allowing parking over that, or is that, has that not really been part of the expectation?
The expectation, so the gentleman who lives, I gotta say it's 629 or 631, I can't remember exactly, on Main Street. The gentleman was brought up in the meeting and he, he said it wouldn't be a problem, he'll abide by it. So as long as it's not an issue, I see as a non-issue. Now, if it becomes an issue, then
Okay.
it can be brought up for discussion, maybe for the no parking, but I, hopefully, I don't foresee that.
And I, and I expect the police to force, would enforce any issues that they see over there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Could that be painted with stripes?
Just identify it, I don't think that'd be applying to George, like that.
Hello.
What do you want?
Goodness.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Hey, thanks.
Okay, um, actually, there's quite a few people in this room.
Okay.
This is good.
We wanna open it up?
Uh, yep.
I think we should.
Well, let's open up to public input in the room, and then we'll open up to public input online, if that's okay?
Yep.
Um, any other public input about the Main Street parking ordinance? Michelle?
I'll just say whatever he said. I'd like it to go back to what it was. See if there's no safety issues.
Anything else up here? No? Okay, um, any input online regarding the Main Street parking ordinance change? You'll have to raise your hand if you wanna unmute yourself. Not. Uh, I don't see any other input.
Okay. Alright, so you wanna make the motion?
Um, oh, actually, let me...
I guess to get the motion, the words, I guess.
Alright.
I gotta say it was October 2021.
It's 75-01, right?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, I'll just, I'll make a motion to revert the changes of parking ordinance 75-01 regarding Main Street restrictions that were implemented on January 28th, 2021? I'll double check that date.
Okay.
Um, to revert it back to the version of the ordinance prior to that.
I think it was December.
It's December, I'll check.
The meeting was in December, but I think it was signed in January.
Oh, alright, yeah. I'm pretty sure it's January 28th. Oh, thank you, Michelle. Um, perfect. Yep, January 28th, 2021. So Section 3, the parking ordinance change approved on January 28th, 2021, restricts parking on Main Street from Front Street to 1.15 feet west of Prospect Street intersection. Be reverted.
Okay, I will second that. All of you?
Aye.
Aye. So, two things, we will get with George about removing the signs and also painting, what, probably yellow over the sewer cover? Just to make sure it's really obvious.
Okay. Do you know when that might, when we might be able to park out front again, or?
Right away.
Okay, hey, thank you.
Tonight?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, this is actually...
Did I mark their word?
Yes.
Snowfall.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to post it?
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Great.
See me, Jerry?
Yep, so that was public hearing.
Oh, that was, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Make the motion for the public hearing to talk.
So, so the next one is, is C and J registrations.
Alright, so I'll speak a little briefly on that. So I called, I called the state and talked to, talked to the woman in charge there of this operation, Kathy Dyment. And it's part of the IRP program, which is basically five of the bus, not basically, five of the buses have permit plates. They're owned by the state and leased by Jobbit. And that's why there's a complete wave on administration pay, registration pay. I also talked to the woman there, they do the same thing. Again, the woman's name for reference was Kathy Dyment, D Y M E N T, Dyment. I don't know if any public, does any of her ring?
Is it with a C or a K?
It's D Y...
No, no, Kathy, it's K.
Oh, sorry, K, my apologies.
I feel like if we clarified with the state and the auditors and...
We checked with the auditors as well, and the auditors basically said that what we're doing is okay. Alright, so, alright.
Um, do you have a definite public input?
Yes, I have a public input. So, as you know, as an former clerk, who's been working, Kate Nesman, thank you too, Heritage Drive. I worked closely with C and J, and I'm concerned about us giving him a hard time, as we've been giving him a hard time. Because he has the choice of doing all his buses in Portsmouth or Rollins Street. And when you're in business and you need to get your buses done, you need to get them done. And it's already come up once this year that he's taken, I think, $6,000 over to Portsmouth instead of Rollins Street. And he was so wound up about this, which you as a board needs to know, if the town auditors are okay with it, it should have never gotten to this point. The town auditors know, the state of New Hampshire knows, it says right on the bus, property of state in New Hampshire, they're not his buses. And he's so ticked off, he's gonna pull his buses from our town, and he can do that. So we need to stop pushing revenue away and start working with people. Because there is lost money, and it's gonna continue. And it's situations like this that take people off, it's legitimate.
So I'd like to reject for a minute, so I agree, it shouldn't take two weeks.
A month.
Until we found out, until we found out, the board found out about it, till I found out about it, it was less than two weeks, but, um... New town clerk and new board, so we weren't exactly sure, I did probably should have been voted on Monday night, but until
We didn't have enough.
I had clarif, till I had clarification, it dragged on, and...
Just, I mean, we pay the town auditors, this was a situation, hundreds of thousands of dollars of loss for revenue, they were now about.
We didn't know. We didn't know what we didn't know, and now we know.
Yeah.
And I think we probably need to...
One of the things we need to do is make sure that we track this somehow, so we don't have the same issue.
Yeah.
So we don't have the same issue next year.
The state will even say in the auditors, there isn't anything in writing. I know Kathy, I talked to Kathy.
Yeah, I did too.
In the auditors.
We need some documentation that says that we know now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need policy.
They do own the buses, and as Jim said, they do this throughout the state of New Hampshire, we're not the only town. And it's only four of his buses, but we could lose all of it. He owns a company in Portsmouth and Rollins Street. His buses are purchased through Portsmouth because that's his main office. He didn't register in either place. When he comes here and he can't get them done, and he's a businessman, he's gotta get them done, he goes to Portsmouth, and we lose the revenue.
So I understand, I understand what you're saying, and until we got clarity, and again, it shouldn't drag on as long as it did. As soon as I talked to the woman there and they explained the permit plates, which didn't quite register the last time when we talked to Dan, it made total sense.
Yeah, and they sent me a picture, and right on the bus it says, property of the state of New Hampshire. You know, it was pretty clear, but again, rely on our town auditors, that's what we pay them for. There shouldn't have been, we shouldn't have to do anything other than, you know, rely on them, they're well aware of the process. So I think I wanna see money go out of town.
Thank you, Kate.
And I don't disagree with her on that.
Yeah, we need to keep as much as we can.
Um, so, Lorraine? I'll get to you, Dave, I see your hands, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can proceed, okay. The only reason I had raised this, this isn't an issue, I wasn't, you know, this really had nothing to do with the taxpayer himself. This is really an issue about if you didn't know exactly who owned them.
Right.
I don't think, we have, we have to be careful about who it is that has the power to waive. Because you know, like, if you did waive and it were a waiver, if you, if one board waived, the next board wouldn't be able to waive the same. That they would have to vote separately to waive it, and it would have to be in the minutes each time. And in this time, of course, you wanna include in the minutes that we understand that it's not a waiver, but in fact, these buses wouldn't be taxed at all because they belong to the state of New Hampshire, which is a whole different issue.
I agree with that.
That, those were my concerns, they really had nothing to do with the taxpayer himself, I can't imagine that...
I think your concerns are legitimate, but...
Right, but those were the only...
Like I said, we didn't know what we didn't know.
That's right, but those, those were the reasons that I was concerned.
I see no problem with that, I just wish it didn't take this long. Sorry, she...
Okay, Dave, do you wanna unmute yourself, Dave Josko?
Is he there?
He's here, he had his hand up, and I asked him to unmute, we're waiting, Dave. Any other public input online? No? Um, I guess Dave doesn't have... Um, any, any other public input in that room?
I see him there. Okay.
Okay, well, we reserve the right for him to come back, the public input, oh, there we go. Dave, I see you unmuted. Did you have input, Dave? Nope, he muted himself again. Okay, one more one.
I talked to Dan this morning, he was ready to go.
Okay.
He just said we'll come back.
Oh, just another point, is the state comes down, he always registers, registers them in September because the state comes and does their inspections. So for him to have to do it in October, he has to reschedule, and that's a problem. And that's why this delay wasn't helpful.
I did talk to his...
Mike?
Yeah, Thursday last week.
Me too, I was trying to get blood when my phone was blowing up.
And I explained the situation, and he told me he was perfectly fine with waiting until the fine, the board decision.
Right.
So it's official for Monday.
Okay, um, I think we're settled on that, so no issues there. But then, I made a note that really, we need to have a policy going forward that more clearly defines that. And, and Dan can certainly keep a copy of it in his office, and...
Yeah, I think Dan knows now.
Yeah, right, alright, great, okay, so moving on. Let's see, so next order of business is Rollinsford Water and Sewer ARPA project funding.
We all come up here, sorry, I'm gonna take over your home, like, your house.
I'm on it. Give me a chance for me to do what I have to do.
I did, but I'm going.
And Jack, you have the... I briefly went through it, but, okay.
We can describe or discuss.
Yes.
Do you need us to print, or do you have anything?
No, I did print one for myself, you have one?
Because I can print them, I just need to go in there, actually, I need to go across to print them if you want.
Why don't you do that? I like the one that, you know, on, like, I apologize.
Yeah, and actually, that would be good, because mine is a little bit spread.
I'd rather take the five minute, you know. So there was, I know there was a few...
The only problem is, is I have to go...
Oh, that's, that's alright.
Oh, do you have some?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Have to take a microphone with me in the other room, so I'm just kinda fit. Thank you.
That means kind of, I think, we have the better one.
Yeah, first of all, how's everything going down there?
Good, keeping busy. Well, actually, first, I just wanted to say thank you for having us come, and just for Jack, because you probably didn't know us. I'm Allison Cully, I'm the chair of the Water Sewer Board, and this is the superintendent, Ray McNeil.
Hey, Ray.
Pat Paluski, a fellow commissioner, and then this is Mike Curry from Wright Pierce, an engineering firm that we...
Thank you for coming in, though.
Yeah, thank you for helping us.
I'm the new kid, so I don't know anything. Who were you, what was your name for?
Mike Curry.
Mike Curry from, okay.
From Wright Pierce.
Yep.
Um, so, when we first initially reached out to you all back in July, when we kind of had heard of the ARPA funds and this whole situation about the town being the one that gets the funds, that we, because we're a village district, we were eligible to receive any funds on our own, but can have them allocated to us from the town. So we first reached out and we described a couple of potential projects that we might wanna work on with these funds. And then we just sent you quite a long list of projects that we have on our to-do list. And like I said in my email, we know that these ARPA funds would never cover all of these projects, but we, A, I know none of you are in the Water Sewer District, so you might not be tuned into what we are up against with the long list of things that need to happen. And, you know, I'm also not sure, I haven't heard too many discussions from the towns end as far as the ARPA funds, and if you all have your own ideas on projects for putting, you know, towards those funds. I know that they're mainly designed for water and wastewater infrastructure, and there's a few other things, maybe stormwater and broadband. So that's another reason why we sent the long list, just to say, you know, we could, we could easily find a use for all of these ARPA funds. Absolutely, and then some. So, you know, we wanted to talk about some projects more specifically than others. And like I said, we have some engineering support here also to help us describe these projects in more detail.
How much money is in that fund?
Two seventy...
I think it's, yeah, like, two sixty-five, I think, was the number. So I thought maybe we could start, so initially, when I reached out, I had talked about this one Porterwell project, and then another one on the sewer side with its cross-country sewer line. Our Porterwell project, we are already moving forward with that with our own funding through the asset management grant, so that's kind of off the table as far as the ARPA funds go. But for the cross-country sewer line, I don't know if Ray or Mike, which one of you guys might wanna jump in to kind of describe what the situation is there.
Yeah, I'll bring you up to speed on it, and then Mike can dive in a little more on the technical end of it. So, yeah, parallel to Pine Street, we have a cross-country sewer line that connects down from Prospect to the intersection where the culvert is on Willie Street, right? So if you were standing on the culvert, heading towards the school and look to your right, going downstream, about a hundred yards in, we have a sewer line that is exposed, goes from one bank of the river to the other. It's, it was built that way, it's designed to be that way. Our system primarily is gravity, right? So that section's all gravity-fed, working its way down to the Fontry Street lift station. The reason why it's exposed is we don't have the elevation to bring it down in below the wetlands and then back up. Obviously, doesn't, can't do that without a lift station. So when it was built, it was exposed, it's a...
When was it built?
It's original, I'd say late seventies.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
It, uh, it's a, it's an old cast iron pipe, it's been lined, there was a leak detected back in seventeen. It was lined, that leak's been effectively corrected at this point. Some of the concerns that we have right now, though, is it, is it, it's exposed, obviously. The, the woods around have grown up over the years, there's some moving trees that are hanging over the bank and that could potentially fall and take that out. It doesn't really have a lot of support, other than the structures that were built on both sides, that, and then it stands. And that's where I'm gonna kind of bring Mike in, because we've discussed some different options, how we could remedy the situation to give it some protection, but also stability. I'll let you jump in from there, that's good.
Yeah, so this, this type of sewer construction is not typical. You know, it was, as, as we were sort of walking to it, he was describing it to me, and I couldn't, like...
Because he was rolling to it.
Picture. It's funny, I've seen these up in, up further in the north country, the mountains, sometimes you'll see them, right? Because instead of having to horizontally drill and go underneath the stream, the simple way out is just to go over the stream, right? And in New Hampshire, we oftentimes, we, we wanna bury things as much as we can of gravity, so they don't freeze. But this is a short, completely exposed section, it just kind of acts as its own bridge across this, this swelling area. It's about forty-five feet, I think that's, it's, it's a span that when you look at it, it kind of makes your stomach a little queasy, just because it's completely unsupported. We talked about a few different ways that we could mitigate concerns with it, like the, if you were gonna build this originally, it wouldn't have been done that way. Now, you probably would horizontally drill or try to find a way around it, whether it's a bridge or some other culvert. But, you know, it's, it's there right now, so we gotta work with what we have. We talked a little bit about some options, one of which was to put a couple of I-beams over top from one manhole to the other, essentially support that beam from the top. So, like Ray said, it had been lined, there's a PVC pipe now, spans from side to side, that's slipped in between that old cast pipe that's there. The nice part about that, that pipe is that it's, it's pretty rigid, but again, it's, there's some rusty spots on it. And say, with the PVC in there, it gives us a little bit of breathing room, but again, it's unsupported, that's the, the problem that we have with this piece. So instead of, of looking at trying to dry a pile and putting some sort of foundation and supporting it from below, our thought was it would be a good idea to support it from above. These are just some of the ideas that we, we've kind of discussed at this point.
And what does that cost?
So we put a planning level number in here of roughly eighty thousand dollars. I think, you know, realistically...
Is that for, what you're saying, for the pipes?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, it really would just be leaving the pipe in place and putting a couple I-beams above it and supporting them from, from above. Because the issue that we have here is that it's a forty-five foot clear span, so it's a pipe supporting itself. If you think about, if you take a tape measure and get it out to fifteen feet, twenty feet, it's okay, and then all of a sudden, it wants to snap, it's the same concept with this pipe. It's just, it's a really, really long span to be unsupported.
And how high off the ground, cutting?
I'd say five and a half, six feet, I mean, it's about eye level, I'm gonna put them down in the, you know, in that culvert area.
Man, I know the area, I grew up in the towns, I know the area pretty good, I don't quite remember that pipe, but I'm sure I've seen it as a kid.
It's, you know what, if you're not looking for it, it blends in, it's one of those things I, George and I had spoke about it, and I brought George out there, and he's like, I had no idea this existed, right? And he's on the stormwater committee, and it's, him and I have had a lot of conversations about it, with concern around stormwater. There was a potential break, obviously. But it's one of those, you know, structures that doesn't stick out, I mean, it blends right in with the, the surrounding.
Would they be able to get a tour of that, Ray, just so we could...
For sure, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty accessible right now. We do, part of, I think, the phase A approach to this is doing some tree work around that area. We just received a quote from a contractor that came out to go about that, and the phased approach. If you look at it, like a part A, part B would be, coming in from Pine Street, there's like a cattle gate right there, there's an easement that goes in, our sewer line runs down that easement, and then this cross-country section tees in there from the other section that's coming from Willie. So it's pretty accessible to get some eyes on it. And it would be, it would be good to see, because what Mike's suggesting is the, the two structures that are existing that were built to support the pipe that's there, is it, you know, now. We assume, we'd have to do some testing, that has, they have this integrity to be able to build off of with the I-beam. So we utilize what's there, you know, raise the I-beam on some pedestals of some sort, and then, you know, drop down some hangers to give the pipe some support. The great part about that, when Mike brought this up, it also gives us protection overhead, so if a tree did come down, one that we didn't get to order, it's got some protection now.
So this is your number one priority, right? Or is this...
This is, this is a high priority.
Yeah, it is, and it's tangible.
If you had a choice, is this your number one priority?
This is, yeah.
Yeah.
From the sewer perspective, right now, this has probably got, we get the most vulnerability right there. The first approach, like I said, is this tree work, and the contractor that came out, his recommendation was to wait till this winter, when the ground was hard, because he didn't have his equipment without disturbing anything. Coming in from Pine up to the first structure, he quoted five thousand dollars to, to clear that. There's a couple of big oaks right there that need to come down, but that's also overgrown, right? That, that right away, that easement in there should be large enough to drive a truck in, in case we ever had to do maintenance. So that's pushing that all back. And then the, the second approach, or part B, would be coming down from Prospect, all the way down, because we have an easement, obviously, on top of that, be from the center line to the outskirts of that easement, and opening that up all the way down to the other side of the bank, and there's a couple of trees on that side that are leaning, that would include taking those as well, and that section, he estimated four thousand eight hundred.
Is, is your priority based on severity?
Potential severity, right? You know, Mike and I have talked about this, and we've batted around a lot, and it's been there for years, it hasn't posed any issues. I think the, the concern now is just the forest out there's grown, right? So the trees are a lot larger than definitely when they were, when the system was installed. And, and the first approach was definitely to do some tree work. But it's concerning from an engineering perspective, and obviously from a district perspective, that we've got this span that's not supported properly. And if it was to break, even on its own without a tree falling, it may go unnoticed for a while, right? Because it's, it's not something that we check every day, you know, try to put eyes on it at least monthly. But if it just happened to timeout wrong, it could pose some pretty serious pollution.
How did you arrive at your estimated construction and equipment costs?
It was, this number right here is purely a planning level cost, we haven't even done really, like, the evaluation for, you know, what that specific thing would cost.
Okay.
So initially, I, I put forth, you know, a small little evaluation study to say, alright, if we were to do it, this is the type of materials we would use, this is what we would spec for type of crane, this is how we'd access it, and look at all those pieces, and then we would develop a formal cost estimate, this is much more of a planning level estimate right now.
Is it all part of...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, it, it's a reasonable thing for Ray to be able to do on the district side alone. You know, oftentimes, it's, it comes through an engineering firm, and we put it out to bid. It's, it's a small enough project where it'd be easy enough for me to say, you know, here's what you should use for I-beam materials, here's what you should use for pipe hangers. I-B materials, here's what you should use for pipe hangers, put it out to bid to a local contractor and, and handle it that way, which makes it a lot simpler.
Could that be a not to exceed price?
You mean, uh, not to exceed like that, that eighty thousand?
Yes.
Um, I mean, it all depends on what a contractor wants to bid on it. Right, so if you put it out to bid and, and it's a not to exceed price, um, you may not have any contractor come in. But I would say, you know, once we got, once we got past that preliminary stage, we'd have a good idea. It's not a huge scope of a project, we'd have a really good idea of what it would cost.
So, this number had to come from someone though. Did you at least kind of come up with materials estimates and then estimated labor costs based on current market rates?
I did, I took, so I essentially took like a five to seven day amount of time for a crew that was between five and seventy-five hundred dollars. And then I threw material costs on top of that.
Okay, okay. That, just wondering, like, if you put a number and a half and say-
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Seventy-five, or if there's some basis for it.
Yeah, typically what we'll do with this type of project, cause the materials are really the smallest part of the project, it's really the fact that you have to get a crane in there.
It's all labor, right?
Exactly, it's, it's mostly labor. Um, that's how I, I sort of came about that number, I, I essentially inflated it by, you know, thirty to forty percent, because right now it's, it's high level planning. And to talk a little bit about the, sort of, the, the concept of risk, it's really, there's a consequence of risk that you have to evaluate when you're looking at these projects. You know, some of these other projects, you know, they have a, a good handle on, on how to, if something goes wrong, it's obvious. Yeah, that they know, okay, this is, this is what our action plan would be, or we would get an alarm in a pump station. This is one that's, it's out in the middle of nowhere, like Ray said, and if something happens, you know, no, nobody really knows. Um, and then all of a sudden, even further, it's, alright, how do we fix it in an emergency situation? It's a lot harder to rectify after the fact, as opposed to being, um, you know, preparing for it, designing it, and then putting it in place. It's something that's a little harder to react on the fly to, to correct.
Yeah, and then, you know, the, the next project down the list there is the Picarus Sewer Line, um, Picarus Partridge Lane.
You know, I don't even know if they're aware of our issues at that site.
Yeah, oh, so, I don't even know, where is that? Do you know where Picarus is?
Reporting in progress.
Okay, so it's, uh, coming from the fire department, downtown. Uh, it's gonna be your next right, Picarus, right? And that crosses all the way over to Pine.
Okay.
And then, uh, if you, as you come down to Picarus, there's a sharp left-hand turn, and it goes into a quick right, and Partridge takes off, I can now, I can show you where it is here. Mike, it, it's, um, it's a little-
Probably closed back.
All the time, we don't even know. Yeah, so, uh, so this is Picarus.
Yep.
Right here, that's the section, this is Partridge Lane here. This is one of our water maps, so it doesn't have the sewer infrastructure drawn in, but our sewer infrastructure comes out of this cul-de-sac. And this is what we're talking about, right here. And this is essentially where, uh, that exposed section is, right? So this is all cross-country, this actually, there's a manhole in this gentleman's backyard for, for access before nineties. But this area on Partridge, and I could draw that out probably if you wanna look at it, I've got more. That's, this, the specific area on Partridge-
Can I keep this?
Of course you can, yeah, yep. Um, there was a repair done on the culvert, uh, back in two thousand fifteen, part, the cul- culvert part on Partridge. It's a very deep gully there, I mean, I, I'd estimate forty feet, maybe. Um, obviously our sewer infrastructure and our water infrastructure run through there. We found, uh, some reporting from Eastern Pipeline Services, company we used for cleaning and jetting, and camera work, uh, on our sewer lines, but also some lining they've done first in the past. And the document that we were looking at before we came is back in fourteen, they lined that section. So from the cul- uh, from the cul-de-sac, uh, manhole, and up, back up Partridge to the next manhole was lined, cause it was found to be some cracks and roots that had grown in. I don't know about the settling that we found, right? We had some CTV work done, and it's very obvious that there's a, that the pipe has settled. Now, it's been lined with a PVC of some sort, it didn't break, but it allowed it to settle the eight or ten inches that it did. And we estimated about eighteen feet settling, and it's a belly, right? So it doesn't settle and then settle further, it actually settles and then raises back up, so it creates this collection thing. And back in, was it seventeen?
The sewer backup, no, it was actually-
So it was nineteen?
Yeah, twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen, there was a backup.
Yeah, we had a backup in that section, um, that was caused.
In a homeowner's.
Yeah, it was, it was a collection system backup caused by oil and rags that led to a backup in a homeowner's basement.
Well, uh, there, there were a lot of homes there, I, I can't picture this, I gotta look.
But Caris has a lot of homes, yeah. Partridge has six, maybe.
Yeah. Partridge doesn't have a lot, but Picarus leading into that area, it has quite a few homes. Um, and obviously, knowing that this dip exists, uh, the next really high priority project, and you could, outside of the exposure issue and emergency repair on the cross-country, uh, if that didn't exist, I'd really match these up both equally as priority, right?
So, quick question, remember, you meant, I explained, so, does that, but, everything runs from Picarus to Partridge and through that area you're talking about?
Right, so sewer runs, it's, uh, it starts basically at the, almost the top of Picarus. Works its all the way, its way down to Partridge, Partridge goes over to Prospect, and then cross-country to that intersection, uh, from Willie, and then over to Pine, and then it's, eventually works its way down to Foundry Street, way up the lift station, that pumps the wastewater in the facility.
But you said also that Stockdale comes over to this area, and Picarus is problematic also, right?
Well, Stockdale branches in on Picarus at one point, it's probably two-thirds of the way down before you hit Partridge.
But just a lot of, a lot of homes are in action in this area.
That section makes up at least a third of our wastewater.
I was gonna say, a third, okay.
At least, and it could be a little higher than that, um.
And so- Didn't we have a, a culvert repair project? We did, in Partridge in twenty-nineteen, and this is where they found that?
Oh, there was one in twenty-nineteen, cause we have twenty-fifteen, I don't know if it was-
Our document says nineteen, and that's a typo. The repair from the note typo was fifteen.
From the meeting minutes of select board, you'd say twenty-fifteen.
Okay, maybe it was, I recall, and it was fairly-
Yeah.
It was crossed out and changed on this paper.
Um, yeah, I feel, so was that identified then?
So, I'm, it's prior to the, and I can't find documents on how that repair took place. I saw notes, I worked with George to see, you know, the notes from the contractor, you know, the process of the bidding and the completion and all that, but there's no real information of the water and sewer district's involvement.
Refused.
Yeah, I saw one, it alluded to the fact of a conversation related to a water line, and that those commissioners hadn't been responsive or something at that time, but I haven't seen it, didn't see anything about-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Discussions of sewer or anything like that in the minutes.
Right, I haven't been able to find documentation, but really what we've identified today, cause Mike and I looked closely at the, at the camera work, and you know, you could go at it at just replacing the sections about twenty feet, and, um, the whole line, I think, is just under two hundred, manhole to manhole, if you're gonna get a crew in, it probably makes sense to just replace that whole line, cause it has been slip lined because of the issues found in two thousand fifteen, which was infiltration of roots, cracks, and it's an old AC pipe, if I remember right. So, it would be better while we're there, and get a contractor in to just evaluate and go manhole to manhole. And then look at, obviously, where the culvert is, making sure that the compaction, uh, is satisfactory, so that we don't have another sag there. There's no telling that, that we can see when the sag took place. What came first, or the chicken, I don't know if it's due to, uh, the repair in the culvert, or if it was already there. You know, so it's really a moot point, this, this assumption.
But the backups hadn't, didn't start from our knowledge until twenty-eighteen, that we know of.
Correct, I, I have had a backup on my watch there, and I don't have any record, uh, on any homeowner of a backup anytime prior to that. But I know that that section, we had slip lined in fifteen, because there were many issues with that sewer line. So there is a chance that that had already sagged, and, you know, when they lined something, they, Mike was explaining it to me, it's a nice smooth uh, transition, so, you know, sometimes you can get away with bellies. Could it have sagged or settled more over the last few years, potentially? But I think the important thing is to get that replaced, because it, it does pick up a big section right before it goes into that, you know, long section across country.
So just, just curiosity, when you're talking backup, are you talking, like, I know, are you talking, are you talking like hundreds of gallons, or like?
Hundreds of gallons. So what happened was, at the property, and that this took place, is what we found is there, there was plumbing in the basement. Our ordinance suggests, and not only suggests, but really shy away from and don't allow, uh, drains in a basement below grade. Right, cause that causes you to be vulnerable for a backup. If everything's grade and above, and we have a backup in the sewer system, you know, the goal is that the manhole, right, is gonna be the point of least resistance, not somebody's basement that's gonna fill their home, uh, with, with sewer. What happened is there was a pipe in the wall that had just a fern co on it, right? So you have all this pressure that's built during the sewer system. This property was a very low point to begin with, and then put it in the basement, it was just a recipe for disaster, so it blew that fern co off. Uh, and then once flow started, and then it started coming through the toilet, through the, you know, through the shower in the basement. The fire department was, uh, called out, they came in, amazing job of helping to clean up, uh, while we were getting the, the backup straightened out. And, you know, they're very much, the, the property owner is, is concerned that this is gonna happen again, right?
Well, and there has been a threat, a threat in to happen again this past summer.
Yeah, so we had, I was called out for a backup in the area, right? So I got there and there were already some manholes popped, and-
What does that mean?
So the manholes, the sewer manholes were already open, and, which is, is definitely frowned upon from the district's perspective. Should be a district member, right, or the operator of the system, controlling the system.
Yeah.
So, that conversation was-
So local people were doing it?
Yeah, because the concern was flush the toilet in the basement, it gurgled, which is the same thing that happened the last time it backed up. So we've gone out to, to check. Well, when I got there, I was anticipating seeing flow out of the manhole, or, uh, the, the property owner telling me that there was backup in his basement. So we met on the, on the corner of Picarus and Partridge, and there wasn't actually a backup. Um, it was slowed down dramatically, it was starting to back up, but it was still flowing through. The potential is definitely there. We deployed a company to come out and back, or jet the system, was able to clear it very quickly. And since, we've actually hired them, uh, to do quarterly cleaning in that area, just to do maintenance, and make sure it doesn't happen, uh, and the conversation's been had with the homeowner that, you know, if you want to open manhole, excuse me, just to call me, if there's any concern, if there's a gurgle, whatever, just call me, I'll come out and identify the issue, so, you know.
But then recently, when we did have the company come back out just a few months later.
Yeah, so, um, they did that cleaning, and then that was obviously emergency, in and out, just make sure it's clear. I had them come back out to do a full clean, like from the cul-de-sac all the way up to the corner, uh, there's a multifamily building up there, spans about three of the manholes, and they cleaned that whole section for us. Wasn't a whole lot to report at that time, but then we had a contractor need to come out quarterly. So they, the next time they came out for like that quarterly cleaning, was only half of the quarter really, cause they'd been out in between. And when he came out, he called me, and he's like, Ray, he's like, this, this is bad, I was just out, say, six weeks ago, four weeks ago, cleaned it, and this is the same area, backed up, heavy trees, heavy rags. You know, he, obviously I scheduled with the secretary, and he's like, you need to be on quarterly. So, well, we are on quarterly, just so you're aware, um, he said, and even at that, you would have wanted even I.
Not to, can I ask you guys a question?
Yeah.
Just ignorance here. The funding that we have.
Yep.
Is it meant for this? I, I, I don't, I really don't know, I'm just trying to figure out my own mind.
Yes. To answer, to answer your question, I'm not sure, yes.
Do we normally do this?
No. No.
These funds are unique, it's, um-
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, this is, is kind of unprecedented, yeah, um, so, sorry.
So, in a real quick, in a real quick nutshell.
Pardon me?
In a real quick nutshell, the American Rescue Plan is allocated all across the country, but from New Hampshire, ex-mongering communities, I could say it's like, I don't have the exact number, but Rollins was allocated, New Hampshire was allocated, we'll say, four billion, I don't know the exact number. And out of that, Rollins was allocated, like, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which we can use for anything that we consider, first of all, that affected the town from COVID. And then, second of all, uh, water upgrades, sewer upgrades. I'm gonna get off tangent a little bit, but I've been doing a little, when I go to different places in New England, I grab a local newspaper and read. And every single town I've been reading about is, I don't wanna say struggling, but trying to understand what they're gonna use the money for. When I was in rotten business, I stopped in Newport, and I grabbed the paper, and they have something like seven million, and they're planning on using about a million of the seven million allocated to do water and sewer upgrades. That's a quick nutshell, and what we need to do as boards is have a better understanding of-
Right.
How we-
Take the money in and allocate.
Allocate. Um, and what you guys are doing, which it seems like great, is we just have to have really good documentation of what we do, when we apply to give the money back to the state, or how that works, I'm not exactly sure yet, but we will, we'll know it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Um, the other thing, I just, well, I'm on a tangent too, so just out of curiosity. New Hampshire, so there's been a discussion prior to this about, and I don't know, Mike, you wanna chip in and all, but, uh, having the, possibly having the fire department hooked up to sewer, has that ever been discussed with you guys?
So Mike and I have discussed this, I, when he came out to look at the cross-country, Picarus, I brought him over to the fire department, cause that has been brought up to me. Um, and I know it sounds like there's a failing septic system over there, if I understand the, the issue.
I don't know about failing, Ray, but it's old.
It's old.
I just snuck in.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
It's old, Ray, it's old. We had it pumped a few years ago, and it's serviceable.
Okay.
So things are good to that point, but that's something that's in the CIP in the long range. Something we're looking at to do, so, like you said, you're aware of.
Yeah, and I, I know George and I have talked about this too, and there's that, the concern about oil separation too, right? Some sort of system to separate oil.
Yep, that's supposed to come down, and the good thing about this, we know where the tank is.
Right.
I know where the lid is on this one, it's not like water, it's a big-
It's not like water, so.
That's right, so, yeah, I mean, you know, Mike and I discussed it, and I don't know if you can remember the conversation off the, to kinda give what your input was there. And I'll let you jump in on that, and then, you know, we can hash it all with it.
Based on its distance from the existing collection system, it's, it's just not something that's cost effective to do on its own. Um, if you were looking at, you know, maybe looking at a big chunk to bring onto the system, then maybe you would look at it, but it's just too far outside of, of where the existing extents are. When we do that, it's oftentimes, you know, it's a payback, it's a cost benefit, can, you know, how many users can we guarantee are gonna be on the system in five years or ten years, and then what's the cost of that? And when you're just looking at, at sewer or water, um, without like the complete streets, I mean, you end up having to dig up a lot of existing infrastructure, relay it, you know, just to have a smaller system, a individual system.
No, it's, it's good to know, because, you know, if it's cost prohibitive right now, and somewhere down the line, there might be a bigger plan, I don't know. Was it building water, and so the restrictions that we may see, you may get other grants.
And, and when we walked it, that's, you know, part of the concern, I think, from the payback is, there's really no tie-ins from, from the fire department to where there'd be tie-in, which is at the top of Picarus. So, i- it would most likely require a lift station, um, because of the grade. And that becomes problematic, if I'm right, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, just because of the size of it. Obviously, the, the fire department being a, you know, a, a part-time volunteer fire department, there's not a lot of flow, most likely coming out of there. So the cost to put in a new leach field with a, a proper separation system, um, is probably way more affordable. And, you know, we could definitely, on plan, both of them, I'll look at them side by side, uh, but the preliminary, you know, evaluation.
I think you told me not to.
Yeah.
And so, so- And so, so let's just hypothetically speak for a second. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the American Rescue Plan. If you guys had your one and two priority, you already got it listed. So you got one and two being, pretty much we take care of the whole money with those two projects. And that's what you gotta do. If that happened, that's what you would push for, right? You wouldn't push to have it split between any other projects. Big goal would be to get those two done. Just want to make sure.
But that doesn't need any funding for any of the projects.
I know.
I know.
That's why they may have to pick what priority.
Right, right.
That's right. The goal was to show really, not a, we, we see.
Well, right. And like we said too, because we didn't know if you guys had any projects on, I realize that this can be a longer term plan because I know that, I think you're until 2024 to figure out the projects in 2026 to spend the money.
Do we get more allocations or is this a, is this a one-time?
Well, there's, there's a lot going on right now. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to speak for the government right now because there's a lot going on, so. I don't know. Though I'm going to guess there'll be more funding available at some point, but that's, right now we have the two hundred and seventy thousand for the King American Rescue Plan. Which, from what I can see so far, just from what I've read, is a lot of that is being used for water and sewer. It's, it's being used in other areas and towns are using it, then they gotta, you gotta have a good, good examples of what they're using it for.
And that's what, that's what I've read. And again, you know, Mike and I were talking about this when we met earlier. Neither of us are experts on how the money's being allocated, what the right path is. But it's fairly obvious that it was designed for water and sewer infrastructure along with stormwater collection. We looked that up to verify and, you know, so it's like those three major utilities that they were looking for, potential upgrades. And one thing, you know, Chris Berg is one of Mike's colleagues and he works with me on the water side. And one thing that he really wanted me to stress tonight was whatever project that we end up doing, line up with, at, at the bare minimum, we could come to an agreement together is just knowing what our priority list is to work with the town in terms of where are you planning on doing paving or, you know, stormwater repair. So that we could piggyback. So we can do sections, fix all the utility.
He talked with choice pretty regularly.
I don't think it was that high.
So that, that's something that may, I mean, I don't want to enter fruition here, but I noticed you got ten thousand put away, well, possibly put away for tar and for manholes. That's easily something that you guys could discuss and figure out what manholes, all the wear and stuff. Yeah, the only I'll say right now is I haven't seen any, yet, I haven't seen any, I'm going to bottom the heads pushing to use that little bit of American Rescue Plan.
It's very early.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the, the chief of police did allocate some money as well through that plan.
Okay.
For staffing. So that is one of the things that the plan covers. It does cover stuff.
It does, for the COVID year.
Yeah. And, you know, there's other areas, so I think you have to take a look at that. Well, and probably have to have the discussion together with them.
Yeah, we do.
If they're asked as well.
Agreed.
But if we, and I'm not trying to put pressure on anyone here, but if we could have a sense of, are you planning on having those discussions in 2021? Just because like we said, I mean, for our cross-country sewer line, I mean, we do need to move somewhat on some of these projects. And even if we have to start drafting warrant articles surrounding some of them, if we aren't going to be able to do them, I know we don't have to decide tonight, but just to have a better sense of maybe your timeline as far as figuring this out would be helpful.
I would like, I would like to see us three as a board have, probably timeline is maybe not quite this year, but within the next three months having an idea of what we're going to use that for and if we're going to use it.
That's a reasonable timeline. So when you, are you expecting that you draft, do a warrant article for, say, your first priority this year? If you don't have a decision made of one?
Well, we'll just have to talk about it at our next meeting to have a better sense. We have to just focus on the tree work as like kind of a Band-Aid, which is unfortunately how often have to operate. So I don't know, but like I said, it would be very helpful to have a sense of how much might get allocated to the water in sewer district.
I think we're, once we're done with the budget and everything, we're working on it right now, like people have a better feeling.
You know, and I'll just say, I would say, I mean, I can't speak for the other two board members, but I'd say, you know, that the cross-country sewer line, so to speak, for eighty thousand, you know, would probably be a lot more probable than the second one.
Yes.
Because you outlined it, you'd be taking up a lot of percentage of the space.
Sure.
Something to think about maybe too, if you're going to push for one or the other.
So, can I ask a question with that?
Of course you do.
So in terms of impact, I, I, I'm guessing that the Pine Street Willie project impacts more residents potentially or benefits more residents than the the Caris Drive, the Partridge Lane colored?
I would say that the, the impact and benefit for the cross-country would be more environmental. The, when we're talking about the Caris and Partridge, we're talking about impact on our customers, right? Backup in their homes. It's an environmental issue as well, but it could potentially be a safety hazard in their homes, so.
From our homes, do we got impact?
I'd have to go at the records and I can get a full list of customers along that section.
Probably safe and, I'm just going to throw a number out there of about somewhere around one fifty.
No, from Partridge Lane?
No, for the whole, for the whole line, the only two, so you got the Caris, your Paristar till and your Partridge off even into that line that goes to the orange line.
Well, and it depends on what you mean by impacted. I mean, not every house is going to get the sewer backing up in it. There's only a few select homes that have the design, right, you know?
I can probably simplify it to one because we already know where the weak link is, right? There's that one home that's already had a backup at the lowest point.
Is there something you can do for that home versus doing all this?
So, yes and no?
I mean, is that an alternative?
It's an alternative, but it's, it's a sticky subject because when it comes to water and sewer infrastructure, water, our infrastructure, our, our responsibility ends at the curb stop. Okay? The homeowner owns the infrastructure from the curb stop then. For sewer, our responsibility ends at the collection system. So the homeowner owns their infrastructure all the way to where they tie in. So yes, there could be a backdoor to have that put on at the customer's cost. It wouldn't be something that would be a cost that would be reasonable for us to incur because it would set a precedent for the rest of the community, for other areas, that we could potentially be liable to do. Everybody, that's a low point, right? So it's a, it's a tough situation.
What is that roughly a ballpark cost for that? But for the customer, keep himself like two grand or?
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably in that ballpark, right? You have an excavator for a day, dig down. The, the issue that you're going to run into is you're still not, you're not solving like the real problems.
We, we get that. I, I was just looking, is there a Band-Aid effect that we could use and if we can't do this, in the short.
Well, and also our quarterly jetting of that line is our Band-Aid right now.
Maintain the line and make sure we're ahead of it. My concern about focusing on that one property is that we're just going to expose the next weak link, right? Because we were going to fix that, but it's going to be.
It's going to move, move someplace else.
Keep going.
Yeah, just keep going.
I get that.
Try to look for easy.
No, no, no.
I know, unfortunately, there rarely are, yeah.
I mean, the easy solution out there is not the most cost effective, but it's, I think, in terms of a payback in long term is the right decision is to repair that line. It's in an area of our infrastructure that's the oldest, you know, it was identified in fifteen that that section alone had some issues, right? And it's not to say we fix that section and it doesn't create another issue, but.
Maybe move someplace else.
Good.
So I, I just got to, again, I want to get a grasp of the whole thing. So curiosity, the pipe that's forty-five feet long, that's above ground, let's hypothetically say that tonight at ten o'clock, if we fell and broke it. When would, when would you know?
The only, the only way I would know without walking out there and putting eyes on it would be if the way it broke caused a backup, right? And what I would know is when I get the first call from the next homeowner up ahead of that. Either they weren't able to flush, because that whole line is out of the woods, so all the manholes are in the woods, right? So if they, if it starts to overflow, it's going to overflow the manholes. So it's going to be, it'd be, it'd be time, right? It'd be until somebody either smelled something horrible, noticed sewer in their yard or couldn't flush their toilet. Because the section that is, would break, wouldn't affect anybody's ability to flow, right?
Does that follow or just keep on?
It would just go in the river and everybody downstream would still be able to continue flushing.
All right, so, I don't know. So I don't, I don't want to hypothetically, definitely environmentally, that would be obviously really bad. It would give us a really bad, yeah, whole town.
It'd be catastrophic.
So, yeah. So it's starting to think about all of us on the board.
Right, beyond just the water receiver district.
And typically what ends up happening in those scenarios, depending on how bad it is, sometimes it can shed light on the system as a whole and have regulators come in to say, okay, well, what else is going on? And start sort of flipping from side to side, depending on the degree of.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So can we schedule a time to see both of those?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I mean, I won't, I don't like putting eyes on it either. I know exactly what place you're talking about. And I'm surprised, I'm surprised I've never seen that pipe, never noticed it.
Yeah, on time, if you're where that gate is, just walk in that little walkway and you'll see it.
Yeah.
Ray, could you do a Saturday?
I can do whatever you need.
I can do most of it.
Yeah, maybe we can.
Yeah, I can do this Saturday.
I can do this Saturday too.
I don't know if I can do this.
Okay.
I can't, I can't do Sunday, I can do Saturday.
And the, or the other side about that project is, is it's small enough that I think it would be simple enough to develop a small little bid package and maybe have hard prices soon around the later.
I think that would be a good move.
To know, okay, this is what it's going to cost. Here's a guaranteed price, you know, as long as it's done before, you know, June twenty twenty-two. This is the number.
Yeah, we could use our Willie Street.
So you can lock it in.
Pricing.
Um, if we wrote it that way, we could, and it could escalate costs on the contractor's end, but at least then we would have, you know, we would have some gut feeling. Okay, people on the.
Yeah, it's one of those, is, is eighty grand enough to deal with, not, you know?
So like when George and I walked this, Norm Giroux was in the process of doing the Willie Street pipe replacement. So he actually came out, looked at it, put eyes on it. So he's aware of the situation. I could probably get a rough idea just cost-wise. I know it's just one bid, but what, you know, proposing, what we're talking about.
But I didn't tell you what it's going to cost.
Absolutely. Oh, no, yeah, I won't give them a number, but just have you give me a price on it, right?
A couple bids would be good.
Of course, yeah.
Um, I don't know if I can do this Saturday. Can we circle back and email you, like, I'll probably know next day if, um, if the Saturday work or next Saturday, is that okay? What's your email address, Frank?
It's R. McNeil, M.C.N.E.I.O. At Rawlinsfordwatersewer.org. Can I give you my phone number too, if you prefer?
Uh, sure.
Six oh three, eight one eight, one five six eight. And that's my cell. We can hear you anytime. Thank you, guys.
Who was it? Six oh three, eight one eight, what's the last time?
One five six eight.
You guys have any more questions?
No, uh, we might want.
I know there's a long list, but.
I have one more thing just before we didn't leave you alone. But so like I said in my email, I did want to touch base quickly about the nitrogen permit and just your points of contact for that because I know Caroline was the person that was attending this meeting and so on. I don't know if you guys have someone else now that.
For right now, I'm looking for a contact for stormwater and nitrogen.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I recently had a woman from Dover reach out to me about the PTAP like training that's going on, which that's more of a non-point source, right? Which is more of a town thing. So she was asking me, you know, are you going to have representation at this meeting? And so, yeah, I was just wondering who I can talk to about, you know, there's a lot of meetings related to this topic.
Yeah, some, I'm pushing a lot of them up like.
During the day.
During the day, so we're, we haven't figured that out yet.
Yeah.
Um, but speaking of nitrogen in stormwater, I don't know if someone in the water, so I don't know if someone will come, but I don't know if you, one of you would like to be on or.
I, so I spoke with Michael Point about a month ago.
Mike's on it.
Yeah, and I told him if needed, I could definitely attend.
Okay.
Um, obviously, we do have a lot of needs. We're going in the budget season too, so, but if I can be there to be assistance, to offer my assistance.
We also have Kate who works at Waters, who is on that committee as well, so she can help be a link as well.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and just in case you were going to call you in for specifics about certain things that may come up.
The reason Mike and I had spoke is there was a question about our permitting at the plant. It wasn't clear if we had a NIPD's permit. And that, we, I was able to clear that up with him, no problem.
But he's a good, he's been a good source for me because I'm getting in between.
Yeah.
And then I believe, I believe, excuse me, Mike, but your firm, and I think it was you about six months ago, gave us an update on stormwater.
Yes.
That was you, right?
Yeah, man.
And thank you for that because you gave us, you gave the previous, these guys, I'm sorry, the previous board gave a really good update what was going on with stormwater and how it affects Great Bay and the communities. So thanks for that.
Yeah.
The other thing I just found, I'm changing the subject. So if we go the other side of the river, it's my understanding like South Burke, the state of Maine pays for all the fees to take care of this, but on this side of the river, it's all the state of New Hampshire. Do you know if that's correct?
So the state of New Hampshire, it's all precipitated from the NIPD's permit. So that's the interesting part with, with Rawlinsford because the water sewer district is separate from the town. Whereas most of the other places around the Great Bay, they're all one. So these ARPA funds, it's an easy one for them to say, oh, we, we have to spend money on, you know, all of these things. Let's just throw that, you know, water wastewater infrastructure, because it's called, coming out of the same pot.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So in New Hampshire, EPA Region One out of Boston writes the NIPD's permits. Whereas in Maine, they have their own state agency that writes those NIPD's permits.
Okay.
So that's where a little bit of the, of the division comes between how it's handled, between the, between the states and the individual municipalities. I'm not sure exactly what Maine is doing in terms of their contribution to Great Bay. There's some push from EPA to have them step up to the plate, just as they've sort of forced communities within the Great Bay watershed to do. But I don't believe that's happened quite yet. I think it's only a matter of time before it does though. Yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting one, when you start to look at those political boundaries and how it's handled from one side to another.
Yeah, we're in the middle of it. Just so you guys know. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Where's fire? Fire, that's.
Uh, well, it's, it's.
Right, we're all done.
National, NIPD's, National Poisoning Defense.
Elimination system.
Thank you.
What's the D for?
Discharge.
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 Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'll just.
I have no idea what you're saying.
I'm glad that things are better where it's calmed down.
Yeah.
Water and sewer could be in two, three years' times, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do that a lot.
I see, I see more and more paint on the driveway, so.
Yeah, it was George. But there's a T that comes off of the sewer that feeds only the water with its own gate. And it's no other than. I've been, I just got customers like, what are you doing out here? You're up and down my home with my dogs.
Good luck with one day.
Tomorrow, I think I'm going to hone in on it.
There's a lot much more space to check.
Good luck on that, Ray.
I just got my first beep.
That was a half an hour ago.
I, I responded a half hour ago.
I didn't see your name the last time.
Unavailable.
Well, there you go, see? It worked. That's, that's the goal. Of course, if you're sitting down here, downtown here, you, you'll receive it later than normal anyway. Of course, if you're sitting down here, downtown here, you'll receive it later than normal anyway. Cause everything down here, and especially when you drop down the hole in the bottom, by the mills, it's even worse.
Okay, when we started.
Look at that, I do see your name on there, that's awesome.
I respond. You need help?
Nobody has a laptop cable?
Yeah.
I am the worst person to help with that stuff, but.
Fine, guys, you all have your own laptops.
Yeah, no, I should bring mine in, I'm gonna stop bringing mine in. Actually.
How you doing? Good, Tommy, hey, yeah, it's gotta be cleaned up though. Just a little work.
Did you get it to Tom LaBelle?
On me?
Did you get it to Tom LaBelle?
No, I don't even know Tom LaBelle.
He's the person who will do it.
Yeah.
He takes care of all the IT.
Yeah, I mentioned it to Chuck, we were here the other day.
Yeah, I know.
It's just had everybody else, it's had somebody else's data on there, and I just don't want to, I don't think that's right.
No.
Oh, in other words, it wasn't cleaned before you got it?
Right, that's what I'm saying. So I just leave it. I'll get it fixed when he gets back.
Actually, I don't want to be town stuck anymore.
Yes. We're going to, uh, we'll put your letter into the mess.
Thank you.
The fire department.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll take care of that.
That's wonderful, because that's a big deal.
I saw it, I'm gonna bring it up.
Hi, guys.
Good night, Lorraine.
Have a wonderful time.
Wonderful, it is a wonderful time.
So, take my umbrella, it's not coming out.
It's raining.
Oh, is it?
It is raining, yeah.
So what is the kind of log for these guys?
Supposed to rain the rest of the night, I guess.
Who would be able to be in the chat?
I'll just put it now.
Okay.
Um, or if you have his number, you can tell to come pick it up at the town clerk's office.
Okay.
Is that for the portico?
Yep.
You know, the flower boxes haven't been moved out.
I noticed that, I noticed that tonight.
Where are they at?
Here on, on the ground by the building.
Alright, I'll take that out.
Can, can everybody hear us online? We had to rearrange some of them. Carrie, can you hear us?
Yes, we can, we can now, thank you.
Great, okay. Is that back there? Thank you. Alright. I think we're ready to resume.
Yep.
Was there an agenda?
Um, no, actually, this is the budget workshop, um, that we're continuing on.
Can we put Lorraine's letter into the mess? She left the fire department.
I haven't seen it.
We got it, we'll give her.
It's right here.
Yeah.
Would it be possible in the future, if you were in a private session, that you had something up there beside the town of Rollinsburg symbol there, where they muted, saying, okay, we're in private session, come back later, or?
Um, when we were in private session, we probably, um, wouldn't mute ourselves, so you wouldn't be able to hear us.
But they want to know that we're doing it.
Um, yes, yes, but that's the norm.
I didn't realize that, looking at it, like, I was watching the town of Rollinsburg symbol there for a long time, and not knowing that we were in a private session.
We were not in a private session, Dave, um, we were having technical difficulties.
Okay, cool.
Apologies, so, but the recording was.
Dave's being great.
The recording was on, so the meeting, um, well, hoping that parts of it were. Sometimes you just gotta come in, Dave.
Who are you sleeping with?
Um, Dave Jessica.
Dave?
Hi, Dave.
Jessica, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, one second.
I'm muting myself out.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, actually, before we move on to the next part of it.
Yep.
Was there any public input on any of the conversations that you did hear before we move on? Let's see, sorry, um, any, any public input? No? Okay, great. Okay, we're moving on, um, so, um, the, so the next thing on the agenda is, um, budget planning.
Yep, Mark, come right up. Let's get you out of here. Thank you.
Fire, we're gonna talk a little bit about police, let's hear it.
Um, so, because there was no increase in the police budget, I figured that, that we wouldn't necessarily have any input on that. I think we're kind of focused on.
Fire.
On, well, the, the increases that we have, and how we can manage them reasonably, so, um, we need to present to budget committee this week, um, police, fire, and potentially town clerk. Although the town clerk is.
We can alter that, we can move that out, right?
Cause they're on the calendar twice, they're on the calendar for tomorrow night and also for the twenty-second. So, so Mark, we were able, we did get some, some data, um, um, on what has been paid to the firefighters, um, this year, which is really helpful.
Yeah, we gave that in last week.
Um, yep, well, Chuck gave us payroll.
Yeah. Nationally.
Uh, no, I don't think he gave us payroll, did you?
A lot of information, payroll, yeah.
Uh, I didn't, but anyways, um, so the, the one thing that, the correlation that I feel like we're missing, um, so we have how you calculate points now, and, um, we know what the payroll is. Correlation that I think I'm missing is, um, what those points are being used for, for those quarters. Do you keep records of that?
Points being used for?
So everybody earns points for different activities.
Right.
Um, that, there is a, a document that you keep that tells us which firefighter earned points for a certain activity.
Yep, we have a log for that.
Okay, is that?
We have a log for the points they earn for calls, and we have a log for, called a time card, that they use for the other activities.
Okay. Um, is that something you submit to Chuck?
No.
Okay.
Never been asked for it before.
Okay.
But that, that is the two logs that we do keep, and that's only went over before. The other side with the time card is for people that are getting, whether it's detailed pay, or having to do station maintenance, vehicle maintenance, training, uh, there's like eight different categories that they can earn points on the time card side. And then like you said, time card plus calls equals total.
Okay.
Goes into the pot, which is divided by the.
So time card is, um, tracked separately from calls?
Yep.
Okay. Um, could, could we see that data? Could you provide us, do you do monthly logs or weekly logs or?
Daily.
Daily, okay.
But we really only have it up on a quarter when it comes time for payroll.
So you have an end of quarter report that puts all of that together? Cause that's the only piece that I think I was missing in understanding the whole process. I think is understanding, um, what percentage of points go to calls versus the different activities.
And that's hard to determine in a lot of ways, cause there's a lot of members that won't earn those points because they don't have the skills that I need to have them do it. And when they have to go and do certain chores and assignments and whatnot, it's usually assigned by myself or Sean.
Yep.
Or Dee, three chiefs, if we need somebody to go do something. So you're gonna see some people don't earn any points on time cards, other than the training that we're required to do.
Right.
So they may not have the outside detail, and so it's, it's variable from member to member.
Can I throw something out here, but since we have the, we have a budget next week, uh, this week? Can I throw something out?
Sure. You can say anything you want here.
Good. I, I think what we should do, it's just me personally, um, in the salary thing, is change marks from three to two, to two thousand, and change the teams from four thousand to three thousand. And then what I'd like to do is see something given back, and I mentioned it, out of equipment or radio equipment, that maybe we get five grand back, we kind of offset some of that. Out of repair, I think you, I think you have fifteen thousand dollars in there for radio equipment.
Radio equipment, that's good.
And you use four hundred and ninety-five dollars?
Uh, I have, actually, I have, I didn't bring it, shoot. Oh, um, I have the yearly expenditures. I brought them, I haven't finished updating them yet, though.
Last year I showed, showed, so it's four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Right, that was through July.
That would've been spent in that line, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, it's all gone now. You have the latest ones?
I do, it's up here, Chuck printed me a copy and I was in the process of.
My point is make next year ten versus fifty. That, that was just my personal thought.
He gave me a printed copy, unfortunately, and I left it on my cover, um, so I didn't bring it with me. I, I will have this updated, probably tonight, I'm gonna try to finish updating the updated expenses. Um, so I can send out, I can certainly let you know where you're at too.
So what are we looking at right now, are we looking at from Mark?
Uh, well.
What do we, I'm just trying to get, just what we're getting right now.
Um, you mean through July thirty-first?
Well, we, we're thinking about proposing to the budget committee.
I, I, I proposed it, he, they had, uh, proposed number in there for the chief of, like, three thousand dollars. I say you cut it to two, they have one for the team for four thousand, I say we cut it to three. And then I think, and this is just me, uh, you can debate it all you want.
Okay.
And the other aspect was that I think there's money in there that we can take out of the radio repair. I think it was radio repair, it might've been, uh, radio.
Radio.
Radio equipment. It was fifteen thousand dollars, let's make it ten thousand next year versus, sort of offset it.
I see.
Yep, it was just my take.
Um, so basically, he's, um, flattening out his ask for salaries and equipment.
Right. That way, we're giving raises to the people, and we're, we're not increasing that portion, that.
No, I think it's.
Just simplifies it. And we can, we can go through each one of these things, we spend a lot of time.
Well, what does that mean, um, to take five thousand out of radio equipment?
Well, you remember why that's there?
Yeah, to buy, um.
It was a four-year plan to upgrade our chip equipment.
Yeah.
We're one year removed because of the need to repair the tank truck, so it just pushes it out over.
So how many new radios do you have now?
The last, uh, we bought seven.
And, um, how many radios does fifteen thousand buy?
Three.
Three.
Five, thank you, okay. And you bought seven yet last year?
No, we bought seven twelve this year and last year, not, we didn't buy any last year.
Well, it's been two thousand twenty. What, why is that?
Because the money was used to repair the tank truck.
Okay.
They moved it over.
Okay.
Then when we came in and told them the issue we had, there was nothing at the time that the, uh, we were able to get any contingency or extra funding, so they said, find it in your budget, so that was the biggest piece that we could move. And that's what we did, so we didn't buy any radios.
So we may be able to, I'm just thinking, you know, certain blocks, because of COVID, so the money, used last year was for the tanker truck, was also used for other expenses, you, something you may wanna, we may wanna just think about is you may be tapping something that can actually plan for some kind of funding.
Could you look at the plan to see if they fund any equipment?
Mm-hmm, and then there is communication equipment involved in that.
And so, so, I've been, I've been understanding the situation for, for a long time, and correctly, I speak out along with you, they have two different types of, you probably knows about, they have two different types of radio, one's analog, which is the old style. And the new style is.
Digital.
Yeah, so, that's in a nutshell, so the analogs add to.
It's updated, can't get it, can't repair it.
Right, but I guess the quick question is, and I know whenever I see someone on the hallway where it doesn't work, but generally speaking, when you go out, you, is it fair to say your, your employees or the fire department generally has enough radios right now, or?
They do.
Okay.
We have, we have, we have the radios we need right now, we're upgrading what we need to replace, we push those back and they go out of service. That's what this line was for, it was a four-year.
Yep, I know, I'm very familiar with.
Yeah, so we're getting there, we bought three radios, like you were saying, Kim, if you hadn't gotten your total update yet. I submitted it the other day, and it's, we bought three radios, two of them at six thousand dollars a piece for twelve, and the other one's three. The six thousand dollar radios that we've been purchasing, we don't need anymore, we've caught up with those. Those are the ones that we prioritized as we needed the most, because they're used more for when we head over the river and go north, because a lot of the main side of things that we respond to, um, has different radio frequencies. So we've addressed that need, so as we move forward, we still need to get about eight more of the lesser, uh, radios that, uh, that are still in our plane.
This isn't budget, this is just a question that I wanna understand. A couple times you talked about the door being open, the fire department, and then the, the latter of this community into the minutes, it implied that you guys were being broken into, so do you feel that was just, I'm just, I wanna understand the situation. Do you feel it was just someone's airing the doors off and open, or you, do you feel that someone actually broke in? Cause to me, that's a big difference between liability if someone's leaving, okay, someone screwed up and did do the door.
We never saw anything missing or out of place.
No, I'm just saying, does the door, the door didn't seem to be.
The door was malfunctioned for the longest time, but I can, you know, I can put you to rest a little bit on that.
Yeah.
Kim, we got repaired today.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that it, it's not, the impression is you guys are broken into, and I wanna make sure that the residents don't believe that we're being, it's more of a security issue, I understand what you guys, it's more of a security issue and, and marking it, but it hasn't been the issues of theft or anything, or breaking it, okay?
No, I would say that that's not, hasn't been proven or anything that we have noticed, but it's been somebody in there that should not have been.
Perfect.
But today, we had submitted the PO, a month or so ago anyway, for somebody to come and repair the doors, put the panic hardware in, that was finished today. He came in and did it, and that was step one, leading to the next step, which is a portion of Sean doing his, uh, work on the cameras and the entry system.
Yep.
So step one's done. When Sean gets back, he's out of town for a week in business, um, he's gonna be, after we approved it last week, you guys said it was good for him to go for that, he'll be starting on the rest of that. So our doors are, and the security is gonna be improved immensely in the next month or so, Sean gets his portion completed.
Sorry, I changed the subject.
No, 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 sorry.
So.
No, I gave you an update, I was gonna, anyway.
No, I, 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 I looked through this, and I, there's not a lot to cut, I mean, there's not a cut.
No, I, I mean, I mean, to me, to me, if everybody's happy with that small adjustment.
So I plugged in the numbers, the proposed numbers, and that brings the fire department increase to one percent from six percent.
Okay, that's good.
Um, so an increase in the budget of two thousand and seven dollars.
I'm personally fine with that, it's up to you guys.
I'm okay with it, but, you know, we have to have the chief be okay with it too, so.
No, I'm not.
You're not?
I think, I can give you the vibe, but I think the members should get, I should get the three, and you should get the four. Okay, remember, we didn't have a raise, we haven't seen a raise in that fire department in two, over two years. Everybody else in this community got a raise, so you can give us, we were told it was gonna be five or something else, and it never did.
So you can give us the five or something else and still retain the five.
It's still, but, no, let's talk about this, cause it's still, it's a thirteen percent increase for you, it's a five percent increase for the salaries firefighter line.
And that's some, so it's not at nine right now, that's over three. And that's some, so it's not at nine right now. That's over a three-year period. They had any for the last two years.
Let me see. It was an increase in twenty nineteen, um, for, for your, for your salary. All right, let's go through it. Twenty nineteen, well, twenty eighteen, um, you went from seventy to eighty-three. Twenty nineteen's the same. Twenty twenty went to fifteen thousand, but you no longer collect points, right?
It wasn't an increase, it just shifted how it was compensated.
So do you know, um, was it a lateral? Like, if you look back at the points you earned over.
It was pretty much exactly what I was earning from points. And when points were put on top of the salary, that was what the fifteen is. That's what I was at.
Okay.
But that hasn't changed.
Well, without reflecting back on his salary, what you were paid for the last couple of years, we don't know how that equates. But I'm just saying, so it is a thirteen percent increase, um, between last year and this year. And then for the salaries, in twenty eighteen, they were at forty-one thousand. In twenty nineteen, they went to forty-six thousand. In twenty twenty, they went to fifty-six thousand. And in twenty twenty-one, they stayed at fifty-six thousand. So, um, only in twenty twenty did they not get an increase. And, I'm sorry, they got an increase from nineteen to twenty, no increase from twenty to twenty-one. So for one year, they didn't get an increase. According to this budget, unless you tell me Caroline's budget is wrong.
I thought it was the last two years, everybody in this community got a budget increase, salary increase, except for the fire department.
Um, I don't doubt that, you know, cause I did see that there were some adjustments. Um, I don't, I can't go back and look at, I can look at all of them actually. I can. So, police.
I mean, I'm willing to give five. So that's gonna cover most of it. Very willing to do that.
Police did not get an adjustment last year.
I know I sat here the other night and listened to all the arguments and I've heard it for a lot of years, that you have to pay these people to retain them. And.
Highway looks like they might've got a one percent.
Monday night I seen people getting, just didn't equate to what the members of the fire department deserve.
So it looks like highway might've got a one percent between nineteen and twenty. And I'm guessing at the numbers, cause I don't have a delta, but I see a slight increase. Police did not get an increase either. And then, um.
Oh, they got an increase, cause they were told to level five. That's what we were told to do the last two budget years.
To level five?
To level five, because of COVID. And that was the direction that we were getting. Paul, you were on, you were, you were members at that point. And we leveled funded for the last two years.
So what do you think, Paul? What do you have, Paul?
I think, I, well, we just discussed a few things and. Mark wants to keep the money for his employees, which I'm fine for, but he also said he could. Come up with five grand not out of radio, but out of something else. And if he gives us a one percent. I can level a one percent increase this coming year.
I can.
And I think, I think if I'm misunderstanding something, you, you can pull five out of something. You.
Five will come.
They're gonna get, they're gonna get the pay they're looking for. And, I mean, I'd like to see level funding again, but I can level it one percent if you treat them. So, we'll leave it at that.
You know, unfortunately, we can't. I know that my previous board made promises, but it's a different board now.
I understand.
But I think this is.
I understand that. But after sitting here the other night and listening to people getting two and three dollar an hour raises. It's very hard for me to bring back to my members and, and explain it to them.
You have twenty-four people. Police department had three people. And they can't hire people. I know, I, I think there's a difference.
Why does that affect the fire department?
Um.
Cause if we don't.
Retention.
If we don't, same with me. I'm in a battle with everybody in every fire department around here, keeping people.
You really am.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
It's a serious battle. I have three members of my department that walked in tonight and says, kids, what? I'm gonna go work for Lee's fire department. Three of my better people. I don't have anybody to replace those with. The one thing I can offer them is the fact that they're getting the support that I feel they need here, so we can help Lee throw something back at them.
So.
They listen to the same thing and they have a lot of money that's even thrown out to the guys. I hate.
All right, and let's, let's stop this.
Yeah, I think we need market data as well. I mean, we don't have market, the police gave us the whole statewide market data, you know, so we had something to go on and that.
I can give you market data, we're gonna be at the very bottom of their list. I can tell you that right now.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't put it on paper. Put it on paper. Um, so we don't have, you know, people, everybody's asking for market increases, and I get it. But we have nothing to go on unless we have something in front of us to make that decision.
So, let's ask Mark to give us that. I say, and I think Paul agrees, that we stick with the raises that are in there.
Cause the other thing with my position is it's just not fire chief anymore. I do three jobs in this community now. And that doesn't warrant what I'm asking for. I think it's very reasonable for what I asked for when you. You want market data, it's in the newspaper the other day. Looks like they're paying Perry Plummer, the fire chief in Rochester. Ninety-six dollars an hour. This job's no easier than mine. There's some market data right there. It's on the front page of the newspaper. I mean, I just, I hate comparing department to department and us and our community everywhere else. I'm telling you.
So, so do me a favor then.
Yes, sir.
You got the five. Is it two thousand more we can take out of something else?
No. You've looked at it, Jack, and I've gone through it too. And at this point right now, I mean, if you wanna take it, you're gonna take it. But all you're doing is pushing something else down the road. This is so thin at what we have right now. But it just keeps pushing it up and, and exposing us in different things. That's why we've been here and talking about, you know, personal protective equipment, P P E and all those kind of things. I mean, which one do you want me to take it out of? There's, there's nothing.
I don't know.
There's nothing else in there that I could.
There isn't much.
Take that away. There's, there's no fat in this thing.
So, I, um, would propose that, that we go with this increase and like the other departments. We ask for job descriptions and performance reviews, which I think you said, well, you don't do performance reviews, but you have job descriptions according to your manual. Um, and we collect market data in the next, you know, round and see, you know, that's the best we can do is to determine, you know, where we fall compared to other communities. Of our size, our calls, you know? There's some variables that we really need to consider.
I'm willing to do that, but let's, let's put it back in what, let's leave it where it is right now, with that assumption, which is the three and four.
So, let me see what that does. So that is, um, it's a three percent increase, um, to the bottom line.
Which is about five, it was about forty, a hundred and those?
Uh, forty-one sixty.
Okay.
That's, um, with taking money out of radio.
Okay.
We'll go with that for now and, you know, I don't. I don't foresee any, I don't know if the budget will say, I don't think I have any budget, I may well have too much of it. Concerned about it?
I don't think they will either, but I, I, I look at the overall budget and, yeah. Let me, let me just speak my point on this.
Yep, go ahead.
I, I, if I look at it, I think it's increased by seven point nine percent, maybe a little bit more when you start throwing the numbers in there.
It was nine, but it's.
No, it's seven point nine on this one.
Well, originally, the first budget we got.
Reading it wrong.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm saying is, at the end of the day, we gotta look at it and say, where does a town need to be? In other words, it, because that's not acceptable.
Yeah, I agree.
That's not acceptable. Where, where do we need to be? Does it need to be four percent? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm new.
No, I agree with seven, I agree seven point nine, we have to get down.
We, we can all leave right now, because that makes no sense.
We all agree that's seven point nine, we need to get down. Where, where do we draw the line? I'm gonna say somewhere between one and two percent.
We're at five.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta reduce that.
I'm saying, we're gonna have to look at that, but I think you gotta put the whole thing together for us and look at the whole.
Yeah.
Enchilada. Right now, we're just doing a piecemeal. I think you need to look at the whole thing and then you gotta, then we gotta look at how do we do it.
Yeah, but right now, right now, if we slowly get a little bit down.
Right.
And instead of being at, when we, when we get the big picture, instead of being at seven point nine or nine, which we're at, if we're at.
We're at nine.
Five, then we only gotta get down to like three or two as opposed to right now.
Right, that's, that's right. That's the way I look at it. I mean, nothing's cast in concrete right now. We're not picking on anybody, but.
We're not picking on one department over the other either.
But you know, I don't even have to run in the spring if, if we're doing with nine.
That's true.
Yeah?
No question about it.
Yeah, nobody wants to see that.
Um, so I, I, I agree, Jack, with your, um, approach about, you know, what do we think is a reasonable bottom line? Cause that's what the budget committee looks at too, the bottom line. Um, so I think that. We can propose, this is where we're going, but in the end, if our goal is to get to a certain percentage on the bottom line, we may have to come back and adjust again.
We might. Absolutely. That's what I'm saying, is nothing is cast in concrete right now. Our, our assumption is that we're going in with this right now, but we're gonna have to.
We have to see what the budget committee's having.
Right.
That hasn't happened yet, right?
Right. What would be, what would be ideal, what's, what would be ideal is what we have in the budget committee is very close.
Right.
Um, you know, last year, I'm speaking about a whole different board, but last year, you know, what was presented to the budget committee wasn't accepted.
Was that, was that, was that level funding?
It was slightly more than level funding. We went to, um, the last year, the previous budget.
Default budget?
Yeah, we went to default, which was about, I don't know, what was the funding, but it was about twelve, fifteen grand difference.
Right. And so the other factor that you've gotta consider, this is just the town, um, in terms of tax impacted, we don't even know what the schools are.
That's, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, is I, we, we get, I, I, I gotta look at the whole thing.
Yeah.
I can't look at it like this and say, we're gonna cut here and cut there. I mean, I, I think we can streamline it as much as we can. Then we look at it and then we gotta make hard decisions.
Yeah, yeah, school's big too.
Is school usually bigger than town?
Twice, it's twice, um, almost twice. No, it is twice, almost twice. It's the county.
I mean?
County's not technically.
County.
County's a small piece, but that is part of the puzzle.
Yep.
County, the school and town.
Yeah, I'll look at last year's.
Um.
Meal.
Cool, yep.
So, so we can propose what we agreed on to the budget committee. Well, we can tell them that this is what we're recommending. But I think it's important that we, you as our upcoming expedition for budget committee, also explain, you know, the thought process is in terms of bottom line impact.
Agreed. I'll, I'll take care of that.
And it's good to get feedback.
I can say, do residents put a move in? Budget committees, is there any residents? I can say there are residents.
Sure. Um, I think it is important to get feedback from the budget committee about what their thoughts are as well.
Let's sit and talk to them, you know, like.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Unless you have any, do you have anything for us?
I got a couple of pieces of business I'd like to take care of.
Okay, that's good.
Sure. It's a release, so.
Short and sweet. Couple of P O's.
All right.
It's kinda like, one of them has to deal with radios.
Two of them? You buy two?
Probably. I gave you two for this one. Uh, let's do this one first. The last time we were in here, we had a P O written for, um. Burns to do their portion of the firelot at the fire station.
Sure.
And the rest of that was gonna go to Sean.
Yep.
But we put that on hold that other time and we didn't submit the P O. But now that we had a discussion last week and it was agreed upon.
Yep.
This is the P O coming back that we never put in at that point.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, so it's number two zero one six to Sean. It's again, under the warrant article. And the total on here is basically what's left over after Burns does theirs. It's eleven thousand two eight six. But as Sean sat here and told you last week, he's not gonna come anywhere near that. He's gonna be well under that. So whatever the warrant article was approved at twenty-five, we're gonna be coming in under that. Okay? Okay? And as I said, Sean is out of town till the end of the week, but he's already been in contact with me. We've already been ordering this stuff at even series projects.
What is the, um, the actual, bend the name on it?
Oh, um, Sean Lynn.
Sean Lynn. Do I sign it? So I think, uh.
Oh, I'll, I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, um, to P O two oh one six to Sean Lynn for. Fire, um, department security access and video cameras for eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
And we'll second that. Sound a favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, we need discussion first. Sorry.
Um, this is, I'm gonna put on that on second discussion. I'm sorry. Um, is there any public input online regarding the fire department, um. Access and security system? I don't see any hands.
Okay.
Hands? Uh, anybody in, oh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And like I said, the first part of that was completed today by the, the repair company. That's been taken care of and getting on to the next step. Second P O is, uh, two zero two zero, two-way communications. And this was for, uh, we had a, one of the new radios that we bought, uh, went into the tank truck. Cause again, the tank truck travels north in the main, so it needed the upgraded radio. The radio from that vehicle was installed in the command car. So we have two radios in the back, so if we go to a scene, we can, we can work on a tactical frequency for fire ground and we can also take care of our dispatch. So they came and did that and, uh, that was five hundred and thirty dollars. It's coming out of the radio repair line. Number one five six, which I still had a couple of grand that I might check to see. And just the invoice and P O for that.
I'm making a motion for P O twenty twenty for two-way radio for the amount of five hundred and thirty dollars. Um, there's no any discussion.
Second.
Just a quick question. What is it? It's just communicating to radios, basically?
There's two sets of radios in the back of the command car now.
Okay, do they connect?
Well, basically, what would happen is if we're on a scene someplace, it's gonna be one radio, which is tactical, which is running all the units that are on scene.
Got it.
Running that. And then we also have another one, in case dispatch is calling us or getting information from people up or.
We could do that before.
Look, cause you only have one, right?
I got, you just try and.
It could, but I'd have to run to the front of the car and go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And that's just not, not the smart way to manage an incident. I was hoping to really bring you one more tonight, but I didn't, but just to keep you updated. It's been a week since we had the repairs done to engine one, where it had a failure of the, some of the pumping system.
Right.
I was hoping, I thought I would get the P O, get the invoice. I haven't gotten it yet, so I don't even know what that is.
And when you come in next time, bring that piece up like that.
I'll bring it up.
Just the one?
No, just the one that you showed. Bring it in. Yeah, cause I, I don't know if you've seen any of the equipment we've done. I keep all the pieces that rot out and are broken, so you can. I can visually let you see what we're fighting on these vehicles, so I'll bring it next time.
All right. Um, so do we, anything else, Mark?
That's all I have.
Do we wanna make a motion for the adjustments that we agreed on to bring forward to the budget committee? Um, at least in the interim until, as we work through the budget. So the changes, um, so, um, I'll make a motion that, um, we accept. The, um, proposed budget from the fire department.
Minus the five thousand.
Minus five thousand on the equipment line. Sorry, radio, radio line.
Radio, radio equipment.
Radio equipment line.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Right, reduce it by five thousand. Um, so that brings it to a bottom line increase of three percent of four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, so we're good for now.
Thank you.
You know, those.
I understand, for now, portion of this.
Thanks, Mark.
Next few steps are important. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Have a nice dinner.
Is the dinner time was late?
I gotta go finish picking up the fire station. We were, you, we had a call.
All right.
Thank you all.
All right.
So, so what I'd like to do is, um, plan to get in all, finish the yearly expenditures. Um, so we know, um, where we are in the quarter three. And then what you'll see should be, it'll have, um, the adjustments for the fire department in it, um, and highway in it, which we agree on. Do we wanna talk about the town court portion now? In the event, they really wanna see that tomorrow.
And we can, but we can.
And we can, but we can as well.
No, I mean, yeah, send to me.
I guess my, um, I guess we can't answer this question, but a big part of the puzzle's in the school board. The school.
Always.
Have they, have they presented anything to the budget?
No.
I don't know.
Not yet.
Uh, I can tell you where they're presenting.
They got two workshops coming up.
Alright. So hopefully we can see their numbers sometime.
Do we, we don't go to that, right?
The school board?
Just...
Oh, you can.
Just budget.
Anybody can.
You could go to the school board meetings.
Um, and honestly...
He'll be on video.
I don't, I don't, you know, that's...
Over the years, I thought it should be more of a collaborative process, so we know the overall impact to the town, but they've always been very separate entities. Um, doesn't mean it has to stay that way.
No, it's a lot of tax payment involved in it.
So budget, uh, the school is, um, school, budget presentation is not until December eighth?
Mm-hmm.
Jeez.
So we won't know the impact of that until when?
Mm-mm.
That's crazy.
December eighth.
Well, can we have a conversation with them, a meeting?
Well, we usually don't, but I think we're gonna need to, yeah.
We gotta know.
Can, can I just say, anytime you want to, you can request their, their budget information?
Oh, you can?
Under ninety-one A.
Um, so the final budgets...
I get one every bu, every meeting.
The final budgets, um, are, for public hearings, are scheduled for December fifteenth. So we have some time, but I think it's important that...
I'd just like to know roughly what it is. I mean, is it, you know, a percent and a half? Is it five percent? Is it ten percent? What is it?
It's greatly, I'm going with speaking when I was on budget, you can chip in if you want, but it's greatly, uh, controlled by the students and, you know...
Number students.
Well, that, you know, like all of a sudden...
I think they're down to one hundred and thirty students.
All of a sudden, say they get...
There's a hundred and thirty-four students there right now.
Say all of a sudden, someone moves into the town and one special need, um, kid can change the budget by one bit.
But they have a contingency fund.
For one or two, yeah. And they have a contingency for X amount of students, so...
Correct.
They're in November meeting and December meeting, they got workshops one hour before. They're regularly scheduled, school board.
Cause they, uh, is that open to the public?
Yes.
Open to the public.
I know, send it down.
Hundred and thirty-four students from, they were around a hundred and sixty.
Now, how many, how many go to Marshwood?
Um, about half. It's about half. The student population goes to Marshwood, the other half.
This.
Or it had been about half, but I don't know now that they're down...
Forty?
Oh, hundred and thirty in the grade school.
And...
Yeah. It's, but it's split about half and half.
Yeah. I think there's actually more going to Marshwood right now than there, than there is at the grade school. Between middle school and high school, 'cause you got six...
I like that that's gonna go up, because they have less students in Marshwood now too.
What's gonna...
Tuition's gonna go up.
Tuition.
There's a cap. There's a ten percent cap.
Is there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's not that we can control right now, but it's gonna be some interesting factors into our overall budget for sure.
Yeah. Um, no, we can...
What was, what was the budget last year, year over year? I mean...
School?
No, in, in total, would we?
This town...
What was the increase year over year?
Oh.
If you look at last year and the year before.
I'd have to look.
Five, probably one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, something like that.
For what?
That's just school.
Though the school's like five point eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just, school is five point eight.
The town was point five.
Was it a point five increase?
Yeah, they wanted, you want, they wanted three point five, but the budget committee said take three out and they brought it down to point five percent increase last year.
It was, I got it. It's on the budget here, so...
And last year's was five point eight, but they also had almost three hundred thousand dollars left over the end of the year.
Uh, it was increased by about, uh, nine seventy minus seven sixty-four. Um, sixteen, twenty-six. Couple hundred bucks.
Cause there was, there was...
Yeah, a couple hundred dollar increase from, uh, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Because there was a big, there was a, I think it was the first year. Actually, it was when I was minding my own budget, but there was a big reduction in cost because of the amount of students, I think, was more than expected. But it was, it definitely was a cheaper...
No, that was, that was...
That was because the ta, school gave back a lot more money and that's why our taxes went down.
Infused that, yeah, it gave us...
This year, they're expecting to give back. They haven't come up with a fi, a whole figure yet, but they're estimating about one eighty?
Something like that.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five. Hundred, uh, li, over a hundred thousand dollars they plan to give back to the, to the town. Will not give back, but not ask for it.
No, I don't, yeah.
So, so last year, there was an increase of about two hundred and, about two hundred dollars, we'll say roughly. This year, as it stands with the budget we have so far, with the changes for highway, transfer station and, um, and fire, uh, we're looking at an increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
So far.
But we've worked on that.
And the tax, and the tax impacts, three twenty-five.
Is what?
Three twenty-five now. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for every dollar.
Maybe a little more.
Hmm, when did the tax base change? When did that change? Because it used to be two twenty. It was about two twenty.
It was two sixty-five.
Three twenty-five last year.
Yeah, it was at three twenty-five. Caroline gave us the numbers last year with three twenty-five.
It's in the town book.
I think it's here too. Um, yes. Uh, actually, I can pull up these numbers because...
Then we'll jump in the town clerk.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to look at that, but, uh, 'cause there is some, some tax impact numbers here, but, um, it's regarding six.
The one thing I'd, and I haven't changed my opinion, but the one thing I'll say is I think he is doing a great job, but because of his limited experience, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna be cautious on a, on a raise this year.
So he's proposing a twelve percent increase?
Yeah.
Got to have it, right?
Um, I mean, I agree, Paul. I don't, he's got a year of experience here. Um, and, and, and I mentioned...
He has been here a year.
Right. I mentioned, you know, Kate had twenty years of experience and we paid her, um, like twenty-five thousand. And again, no market data. We don't really know, you know, what the range is right now for a town clerk who works part-time with that level of experience.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, unfortunately, data right now is all over the place because of job salaries. It's like, if you did the same thing a year and a half, two years ago, I'm sure.
Be different.
A town clerk in any town would be quite a bit lower paid than they are thrown into right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly get, the state has a lot of data online. Um, it's just taking a little bit of time to dig it out.
Oh, you know what? Now, see if I can, I...
Cause that's what John did. He got...
Cause Kate did, Kate did supply a lot of that information too, about, she supplied about fifteen, twenty channels, same size as we're all sort of with the town clerk, yeah.
Um, I, I agree. I mean, I feel like, you know, our cost of living, um, you know, is reasonable.
Right. Yeah, I think we should do that.
Cost of living's reasonable and we can talk, I mean, you know, obviously two, two or three percent. I would, I mean, if I got twelve percent raise in one year, I would be like ecstatic.
Yeah, but you know, everybody's gonna ask.
I know.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the norm, I mean...
No, and I, and again, he's, he's got some color points.
And he's, he's, he's doing a good job. I talked to him today, actually.
Good. I think he's doing a good job and I think he's very responsible. The only thing I'll say, and I'm not blaming the town clerk, but I think the situation with C and J should have been resolved, handled quicker and been resolved quicker and not dragged to the slipboard twice, but...
Well, he's, he, he, it, it goes to his numism. He's going, he, he went for training, listen, this is what they told him in training. I mean, I mean, so there's no judgment.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
There's no experience.
So...
The policy.
Right. So I'm gonna follow. I'm gonna see what you guys do think, but I wasn't planning on doing this and probably not going to, but do you think it's worth reaching out to Mr. Javert to explain the situation or just let it be?
I think, I, I think, do you, do you know? See, I, I don't even know. I mean...
I know who he is, but we met a few times.
I think somebody should contact him.
You know?
You dealt with, I think, I think you should have a conversation.
Cause if you don't personally...
Yeah.
Makes a big difference.
I mean, be calling, call, he may not...
No, definitely.
No, if you call him, I think it, it's worth discussing, because we don't wanna lose his business.
I don't think, but I don't know that, so we'll just make sure.
So can we talk through the town clerk's budget a little bit more? Cause he's still at a thirteen percent increase.
Yes, yeah, yes, I can, I can imagine how it's gonna go.
Um, so he's currently, so if we were to do a two percent cost of living, it brings that...
I was thinking three, I, I, three.
Okay. So we're at thirteen percent with two. Um, so, so currently, that department increases fourteen, a fourteen percent increase, um, of four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. And, um, it, but it's because we have three elections. That's a, a big chunk of it. And also, um, they have interware, develop software development, so online, um, services are being proposed, cause I guess they have the...
They already have, yeah, they have, they already have the software.
Um, so I, I don't know if this is a maintenance, um, cost or not, but that is, it is something. I think it is.
Yes.
So, how much was it?
Sixteen hundred and thirty-two dollar difference.
Yeah, that's, that's an annual maintenance.
So the proposed, last year's proposed, actually, last year's approved appropriation for that was eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. This year, it's proposed at twenty-five, twenty-seven. So that's a big chunk of that fourteen percent.
I'm not sure why that is though. I know what you're saying, but are we, I think...
Cause they didn't have everything online last year.
We're talking online for auto registration, right?
Uh, yeah, and dog, dog licensing. So it's, it's basically online services is the increase there. That's the biggest chunk.
Well, that's new software, right? That's new software.
And I believe in last year's budget, they all weren't, they were new lad, and so this is the first year they will get the maintenance.
Yeah.
On two of them.
Yes.
Cause I think they got two new ones.
I just said for the whole year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I, last year, it wouldn't have been for...
Um, so, I mean, I think that definitely adds a value to our town and I'm not adverse to that at all.
Um, I think once you get it online and once people get used to it, it's gonna make it a lot easier for everybody.
Yep, I agree. So, um, so the three percent increase, um, and, um, so, and three elections this year, um, and also the new online, um, services, um, that's a four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollar increase to the budget.
So, I guess, and I'm going with memory, but I guess this online fee is gonna be every year of this, like twelve to fourteen hundred dollars.
Um, we'd have to get that from Dan. I don't think there's more.
Usually it's an annual maintenance.
Actually, we don't want, it might be in the details for this.
But I do remember the previous board meeting being on it. We, it was actually, I think, originally...
What do we pay for the software?
Originally really pushed by the previous town clerk to get the software and...
There was no mention of yearly fees.
What line item is that?
Um, that is, um, thirty-eight.
Thank you.
I don't have any details. Well, there may be some, uh, information, details for that.
Alright, so let's see.
I don't see, um, details around that part of it. I see some details about online tax cards, um, as part of the IT cost, but it doesn't give the cost for, well, for that town clerk system.
That's something we're gonna ask Dan. I go to say it's a, it's a yearly fee, but I thought it was, if we were to choose that, say, twenty-four hours a week, as opposed to someone spending forty hours a week, it may not be as qual, qualified or as efficient. And then you get, you know, someone working forty hours a week doing less than someone at twenty-four.
Right.
You know, a person twenty-four is just much more efficient.
Right.
You know, and that's very possible.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with, with you on that. I think, uh, we were talking about deputies and stuff.
Yes.
My conversations with Chuck, like, I, I wanted to, I, I think he's inundated with everything he has going on.
Yeah.
But maybe we could look at putting somebody else in that deputy role. You know, if your wife doesn't wanna do it, or if she does, or...
Yeah, that's...
You know, but I, but I think we maybe take that away from him, so, so he can manage more of what, what we have out there.
Specifically during these times when we don't have coverage for town administration.
Right. I'm concerned about it. And, and I think we, the other thing, um, that came up, I think Selma was there as well, is that he's concerned in January, when they had the audits and everything, that he's not gonna be able to do all this stuff. So we definitely gotta get somebody in here now.
I, I agree that in the next two months, this, this, we should have someone in the spot, I suppose, yeah. I agree with that. Hopefully soon.
Yep.
So can I step back? Do we wanna have Tom come in, or do we wanna ride it out for a little bit from Tom's other agenda items?
Why don't we ride it out for a week with Tom? There's nothing really specific that will, you know, unless, is there anything we need done right now?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
We ride it out...
Uh, well, there's a couple outstanding things. One is, I still haven't heard back from Pete Gagnon on the service contract for our heating systems.
Okay.
Um, and actually, uh, John Marasikich was supposed to meet with Moriarty Electric about the generator, uh, today. I'll have to follow up for that. So those are a couple outstanding things.
If, you know, if we wanna have Tom coming up just at the gym, just have a quick, this is where, uh, you know...
I mean, we can...
We're not expecting a whole bunch of hours for you to fill, but we're gonna tap on you when we can, like we said to him.
Well, I think we could have him come in and see if he's...
Can we do it on an as-needed basis?
Uh, we could actually fund that at a different, as the, a temporary facilities director, I'm thinking, cause there's money in a different line item, perhaps at a different rate, you know?
Right.
That's something to consider as well. Do we not hold on that? I mean, we'll probably have a pretty good agenda for this coming Monday. Do we wanna hold on that?
Yeah.
Cause that's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do we wanna invite the town clerk and the tax collector in to have a discussion about deputies? And see what the willingness is, um, to do that. And if not, then we plan for potentially, um, like, doing that temporarily. Cause the, the thing to consider is, um, let's see, I think the town clerk is three years, correct? Three years, okay. So, um, yeah, I, I think we need to solve this before, um, long. We definitely have to.
I agree.
So I'm thinking, do we wanna put on an agenda to have, come in and have a conversation with them and, you know, kind of move the conversation forward a little bit more?
Well, I would, what I suggest is, I mean, talk, not as a board, like, two of you together, cause you have to do it independently.
Let, let's talk to them individually.
Talk to them individually.
We'd have to all have...
I, I plan on, I plan on, uh, when Chuck gets back, having a discussion with him.
Well, he hasn't had any time to do anything for Dan. I know that.
I, I, I know that for a fact.
So I don't know if Dan is, like, in need of the services right now.
Dan told me he's okay right now.
I think it's more of a coverage.
It is. It's just coverage, but somebody's gotta learn those systems.
Right.
You know, if he's back for them, that's, that's the problem.
That, no, why don't we, yeah, why don't we delay?
Can I just tell you one thing?
Yeah.
Um, so I know that, um, you, Kate Nesman is working as a per diem town clerk. We might be able to use those services tempo, if everybody's a willing party. And if we had a need, cause towns do this, um, they call, if they know that somebody's gonna be on vacation for a period of time, they use per diem services. So...
That's a bad idea, that's what you're saying.
I know, um, Kate is filling for some of the other towns around here.
Interesting.
Something to think about.
Yeah, no, it's interesting. Do they do that for town administration?
So do we wanna at least have a conversation?
Do they do that for town administration?
I'm sure they do, actually. Um, so do we at least wanna have a conversation, get a feel for what, um, Dan and Andrea are thinking? Because if they're not thinking that at all, then maybe we need to entertain the option of a per diem.
Yep, I'm fine with that. And the other, the other thing is, I think, yeah, I sat down and actually had a little talk with Chuck last week to, uh, about things.
He just seems like he's so busy in what he's doing. It doesn't make logical sense for me.
That's right. I mean, the only.
And I, I, but I have not had a conversation with him about this either.
So the other thing to consider, he's only four days a week. You know, that, you could make a full-time administrative assistant position. Um, that's the other thing you can consider if you did.
You can flip it.
You, if you did a part-time TA, you know, for twenty-four hours and you made the administrative assistant full-time, what does that mean? Something to think about. Well, somebody's gonna get benefits, either the TA or, um, and while actually, I think it's sixteen hours now.
Depends how we brought it, you know, to the town administrator, we brought it part-time. There's a lot of things to think about, really.
And you'd have to be sure he was willing to give up his other.
One thing I'll say to Chuck, Chuck brought up some good points, um, that we as a board gotta act on is, his, his discussion with me, we talked about a lot of job things and stuff, but his discussion maybe was that he felt that we need to act quicker than, we need to act sooner than later when filling town administrative position because he feels the residents are the ones that suffer. And he's right, because they're not getting their everyday services.
Right.
And I.
And then call up and talk to them, talk to their resident. So they don't have that right now.
So, all right, so adding to the agenda those two things from the skin agenda and I have to, let me, just give me a minute, um, to go through and make sure we didn't, there wasn't anything else in email that we needed to deal with. But do you want to open it up to public input while I do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Before you do that, what do we got left to do on the budgets? What are the other things we gotta look at?
Uh, we still have executive.
What else?
Yep.
Right.
We have executive.
I mean, not that we need to do it, I just.
Actually, I want to go based on their, well, recreation isn't even on the schedule for budget coverage. I need to mention to them. And then you have town, well, actually, no, um, executive office, town. So the town means executive office, um, financial administration, reevaluation, personal administration, planning, zoning, government buildings. Um, so it's basically all the other.
Components.
Components of the budget minus police, highway, fire, town clerk.
So where do we get, like, the planning stuff and everything? What is that? How, how does that happen?
It, it's in the budget already.
So is, is that, so who makes that up though? Who creates that?
Uh, the departments do. So I think Sarah McLaughlin would be the planning person.
Planning and zoning is Sarah.
Planning and zoning. Um, and actually.
She doesn't.
I mean, do we meet with them or do we just accept it? That's kind of where I'm.
No, we can, we can definitely bring them back in because she was one of the ones where she's a clerk position that's at twelve, twenty-four an hour and asked to be moved to sixteen. Um, and I think my question and Salma said that there's a lot of prep time, but the, the hours is, you know, um, it's a hundred and, I think, I think it was a hundred and thirty-six hours a year that it's budgeted for. So we can certainly.
So what, go through those again for me? Those a lot of thousand dollars increases.
So you have executive office, um, which is basically town clerk, I'm sorry, town administrator, Salma and Chuck.
Okay.
Um, you have, um, financial administration, which is tax collector and treasurer, Paula, Willie. And then you have reevaluation, um, which that.
Is, is the treasurer a stipend job? I, I don't know.
Yes, yep, it is. Um, and that's level funded this year.
That's an elected position.
And then reevaluation, personal administration.
Reevaluation, I'm sorry?
Yep, um, there's reevaluation.
Who does that?
Um, it's, it's, Avatar does that service for us and the budget is, looks like there's a zero percent increase from year to year. So that's flat. Um, I think I'm really focused on the ones that are not flat and what we need to do, if anything, to, you know, make adjustments.
So.
So planning is a five percent increase, but it's seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Yeah, that's planning and zoning.
Yeah, that's pretty small.
Yep. Um, and then government buildings is eighteen percent increase.
What is it?
Government buildings. But a lot of that is the water and sewer adjustments.
Going out.
Yep. And we have insurance, that's, insurance, we can't do anything about. Regional associations is flat.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Police, fire, highway, building inspector is flat. Street lighting is flat. Health is flat. Animal control is a negative because we don't have an animal control officer. Actually.
We don't need one. No, I gotta, gotta talk to John about it.
Okay. Oh, you did talk to him about it?
Yeah.
There was an email from.
Um, general assistance is flat. Parks and Rec is a hundred and five percent increase, um, a forty-one thousand dollar increase. So that one's pretty significant. Uh, library is, is like a one percent increase and then, yeah.
And the parks and recreation, I think one of that, part of that was, I can't remember the big item. One was seven thousand for skate rink, that.
Yep, but then it was, oh, there was a rector.
For person, right.
Yep.
Yeah, rector, right.
But they have generating revenue offsets too.
We, we can't give guidance, right?
Who's giving you guidance?
Can you give her guidance?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Along the rec.
Yeah, on the rec, yeah, because we want to give guidance on, I mean, it.
Well, I.
I don't know how to look at it because we've wanted to.
I think my position about, my position about guiding the position is that it needs a plan.
Right.
That's kind of where I was going.
Yeah, um, so I can talk to her about that.
Yeah, so, yeah, so their, yeah, I know what you mean. So their, their hope is you get a rector to, and that's the plan, that the rector to will.
Make the plan.
Create everything, but you gotta, you gotta.
You gotta, there's gotta be a baseline.
Kind of like a business plan.
Yeah.
Um, so, so we have a few things, but a lot of them, um, so those kind of fall under town.
Okay. So we have no meetings coming up? I gotta check since I think I'm planning. I don't think there are.
Let me just, I'll tell you the meeting schedule is coming up too. And it was, it's, it's still, yeah, early in the month, it's, it's. So we have, um, on the tw, oh, well, for select, so budget presentation, um, next budget presentation is this Wednesday.
Yep.
Um, police, fire, town. The next budget presentation is October twenty-seventh, and that's library, cemetery, town clerk.
Which is you.
That's fine.
Town clerk is here twice. It's in two meetings. Um, so.
And then rec?
Oh, you know what it is?
So instead of planning meeting.
I bet you, it's, um, not town clerk, but town, the town budget. So since we haven't prepared the town budget, the rest of the town budget, we'll plan to do that on the twenty-seventh. That means we're gonna have to get, get through the rest of those.
We can do that.
Yep.
So we have, do we have a scheduled, us have another scheduled, the select board have another scheduled budget coming up and it's gonna be sometime, probably next week?
Um, so our next.
We got Tuesday. We got Tuesday as a regular meeting.
Yep.
Do we have anything else for us as a select board budget, scheduled for budget in the should week?
We probably should.
Another.
Let's see if we can bail away some of this.
Um, we, we haven't posted it. I can work with Tia to post if we wanted to do another day next week. Or Salma.
I think, I think, if you guys, I mean, Wednesday's short for an hour and a half, do it Wednesday.
Yeah.
I'm free Wednesday's night.
No, we're golfing. Let me just check the calendar.
Golf leagues off.
So we have, um, planning board on the fifth, what is it? So the twelfth is upboard, uh, the wrong, oh, the school board meeting is the fourteenth. That's not here though. So, yeah, so we have the availability to meet here next week. Um, I just need to let Tia know.
Why don't we try and do that?
So Tuesday, Wednesday, that way.
So the fifth and the sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Yeah, yeah.
No, that's, that's what we're on right now is the fifth and sixth.
Twelve, I'm sorry.
Twelve and thirteen, right?
Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen, twelve and thirteen. Because the month is a holiday.
Well, so just so you know.
Yep.
Um, we have a regular select board meeting on the twelfth.
Yep.
And then we don't have another one until the twenty-sixth. So in theory, we could use the eighteenth as a planning session if we wanted.
I'm gonna be the way.
I, so am I. I, my, my thing would be, if we can do it next week, let's do it.
Okay, let's do it next Wednesday.
And, and try and get us, the more we can crunch this up.
Yep.
That, that gives us a little bit of latitude on the backend if we need it.
All right, so Tuesday, Wednesday, we meet, all right, both meetings at six.
Right.
All right.
So I'll, um, email Tia to post, uh, because Chuck usually does the posting, but he's on vacation.
How is, how is that doing? Are there any issues?
I have the wellness one. It hasn't rang yet, so that's good.
Uh, he said, um, well, you probably talked to him, but when I talked to him Thursday, he was hoping that he took care of that case.
Yep. So, um, thirteenth, so, uh, ten thirteen at six P. M. Okay, I'll do that. Um, okay, I got my list to do.
So if we leave these checks in the, uh, I'm leaving right there.
Yep.
Yep.
Dan can get in there, right?
Do you know how to want to do it?
Yep, I do.
So I'll let Dan or Phil's.
I figured out the trick and I emailed Paula about it, so.
I'll let, did Dan or let Phil's checks in there if he comes and gets it. I know he's looking for it.
Oh, actually, we can leave it in the town clerk's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can leave it there too. I don't, I don't know if he can get in there or not. I mean, into that room, but Andrea can.
All right. I, you know, I'm gonna agree tomorrow about the situation, if Phil's coming in. I'll, I'll call there, wait six o'clock, yeah. I just wanna, I mean, I'm not to worry about it, but they don't start until, both don't start until one tomorrow, like.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so let me just, um.
All right, well, I can't get that.
Go over the to-dos. So, um, Paula emailed George about removing the signs for Main Street and.
Well, those people seem very happy, huh?
Yeah. And almost a year of paint, um, and painting the manhole cover. And then, I mean, they did make it known about policy definition for C and J. That's not something I'll update right now, but I wanted to make sure we get it out there. Um, I need to e, um, let everybody know if we could do a Saturday tour of Pine Street, Willy Street and the Caris.
And I, I'm, I can check it out on my own. I need to, because I got a couple Saturdays I thought I'd be coming up the next two weeks.
Um, and then I'll email Dan about the annual cost for, um, the interware system as well as whether it integrates with our website.
Oh, sure.
Oh, uh, I have to remember on Wednesday to let, um, John know that they don't have a recreation, um, presentation. And then, um, update the agenda to include the post issuance expenditure of funds, invite Paula to that. Uh, invite Dan and Andrea to the next, um, regular meeting to discuss deputies versus, and then potentially for DM option. And then email Tia about a meeting on ten thirteen.
Okay, so I got nothing to do on that except for.
Would you like to email Tia?
You, you have planning tomorrow.
I do. Planning tomorrow, so.
I, I'm willing to take, if there's, I'll, I can summarize this in email. If anybody wants to take some stuff off my plate, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I just feel like you get a lot and me and Jackie.
And do the budget.
Me and Jackie get ready with nothing, so.
How about I summarize the open?
Sure.
Um, to-dos and.
Tell me what you want me to do.
Okay.
When is tomorrow, so, is that what it is?
Yes.
Um, so town clerk questions about the online system, integration with the website.
Uh, I can do that with, I can talk to you about that.
So I, if you want, I can email just to make sure it's all.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. So follow up with that, okay, good. Um, the, um. I can email to you. Um, Jack, do you want to email Andrea, Dan to talk about coming in for a regular meeting to discuss deputies?
And that's what day?
Um, next regular meeting, which is the twelfth.
Yep.
All right, so, Jack, Boyle, got it? Um, Paul, do you want to email George to remove the signs and paint the manhole cover?
Yeah.
Great.
I gotta email anyway, so I won't not write it down.
Okay, no, I'll, I'll summarize this too.
Thanks.
And then, um, I'll, um, Jack, do you want to email Paula and invite her to that?
I don't even know who she is.
Paula Willey.
Paula Willey.
She's the treasurer.
What?
I'll make, I'll.
Treasurer.
I'll make sure to include her email. Okay, great. And I think that's good, you guys. Um, I'll take care of Tia, take care of the budget, the agenda. That's all, summarize what we are doing there.
Yep, the other thing.
So we want Paula to come in and talk about what?
The dawn, the post issuance form that needs to be, um, signed by the select board. I think if, if she's a owner, but we can get it done right there. I'd like to know what expenditures we're signing off to. Like, I want to understand it better.
Yeah, me too. It's a big, it's a big number too.
So we need to just have a little bit of background on it, Jack, and, um, what we're, what we're signing off to is important.
Yep.
Okay, good. You guys took two things, each took two things. Perfect.
Okay, so the other thing I couldn't probably try to do, this is separate from budget, but I have talked to Curtis Wright, civil, civil engineer from Curtis Wright. Uh, Jay Stevens was a general contractor. Um, just so you know, it hasn't dropped. We've talked about the transfer station, what needs to be done, if anything needs to be done about it.
Oh, right.
You know, being transferred over to rec, maybe not, rec land being trans over for the use of, using a transfer station maybe not properly. But it's not like, it's not present unless we get on the, it's, it's on the radar.
Yep, um, so once things kind of settle a little bit with the budget stuff.
Yeah, good, working on that stuff, yeah, exactly. All right.
All right, let me just see if there's any public input before we.
Kim, on your to-do list was to contact Jimmy Javert.
Uh, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you for the, uh, just a, just a quick, hey, what new select board members, we didn't mean to delay it, but we want to make sure everything is right or something like that.
Yep.
Oh, because nothing's ever been righting.
Right.
No.
We gotta take everybody's, you know, everybody's opinion and sometimes lay them into it. I mean, I can't say I'm pulling his muscles because of that. I don't know who he is, so I'm not gonna comment.
And I'll, I'll explain that, you know, we anticipate that before this happens again, we're gonna have a policy in place that Dan will have access to, or.
Yeah, it shouldn't happen again. Shouldn't, it shouldn't.
And if for some reason Dan's not the town clerk, but we have something in that office that defines this.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, any public input online before we adjourn? Raise your hand. I don't see any hands. Going once, twice. Okay, thank you, everyone.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna make a, maybe do it, is there a public adjourn? All right, let's do it, right? Okay?
I.
Okay.
Thank you.